All right, good evening. The time being, that one doesn't work, so I'm gonna say a little after seven. All members of the planning board being present, call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda, approval of minutes. A motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the minutes of 2:10:20, as written.
2:20, all right, I have a motion, do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to agenda item B, committee reports administrative actions. Any committee reports any members wish to make at this time? All right, seeing none, move on to agenda item B two, DPW sidewalk discussion. Is there anybody here for the sidewalk discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, I picked up the wrong one, I was looking, I grabbed the new one, sorry. A and R, 429 Pleasant Street, sorry. 39. 429 Pleasant Street? Yep.
I'm not really sure.
Actually, come right to the table.
Per a land order settlement agreement.
We need you to name him.
Denise Carr, C-A-R-R, 429 Pleasant Street.
Okay.
Per a land order settlement agreement, I agreed to sell part of my driveway to my neighbor, and the deed should be there, it was done by, I believe it's Aho surveying out of Drakett.
All right, Mr. Ryder? Mr. Ryder, you don't have a microphone either, I see.
No, that's okay, I can be loud. This picks up real loud.
All right, Mr. Fallow?
I'm all set.
Mr. Delaney?
I'm all set.
Mr. Fattaya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, from what I'm reading is 431 Pleasant Street, went from 2.27 acres to 2.30 acres, right? That's what the paperwork was identifying, on the map here. So you just gave your neighbor a small portion of the property, right?
Yeah, mine went from 1.47, 429, to 1.44.
Right, and they went up the same amount, right?
Yeah.
From 2.27 to 2.30, so.
Yes.
Good, that's all, just a clarification for the record, that's all. All set, Mr. Chairman?
All right, the chairs are set as well. I have a motion on the A and R plan.
Motion to endorse the plan.
What about you?
I asked, Ma. Okay, so we have, we, we had, um, sorry, we have a motion to endorse, do I have a second? A motion made in second, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
All set.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda item C. 984, 970, 986 Main Street, center fire station, site plan special permit and special permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
Yeah, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Now, I think I need to slide over.
I think I'll give you a scooch over a little bit, just for the presentation, yeah. I guess that's what we're doing.
So, did you show on this map here, or what?
You just state your names first, the record, then the floor is yours.
I'm Janet Slamenda from HKT Architects, principal in charge.
I'm Amy Dunlap from HKT Architects, I'm also a principal.
I'm Lance Hill, I'm from Park Corporation, we're subcontractor to HKT.
And Mike Hazel, which is my chief.
All right, the floor is yours.
So, I'm gonna tell a little bit about the project. This, the center's fire station headquarters site, there will be a new 22,224 square foot, three-story building with related site items, elements on it. The location for the new fire station was established during an earlier study. We did not participate in that study, and it was deemed appropriate to support the mission of the fire department, which is to respond to emergencies in the town in an appropriate time and manager manner. And the location in the center of town, essentially across from here from Town Hall, will benefit all the citizens by remaining in the centralized location. The design, you know, recognizes both the new use for this site and the impact on the surrounding neighborhood, and is meant to minimize the impact and any adverse effects on the neighborhood. Under the zoning bylaws, the building site will be at 984 Main Street, which is in the commercial district and town overlay district. The parking will be at 986 Main Street, which is the Bank of America site adjacent to it, and additional work will be done at 970 Main Street, which is the housing in front, and that's also in the same commercial district and town center overlay. Since the municipal project is permitted in all of these zones, subject to special permit and site plan special permit, and per zoning any land or structures owned by the town of Tewksbury exempt from all dimensional requirements set in by the zoning bylaws. So the project includes property at 984, which is, and the license agreement with the abutter at 986, which is Bank of America, and the land swap technically with all the abutter at 970 Main Street. So those are the three properties that are connected to the project. We're gonna be clearing the site of all vegetation in order to accommodate the building, the aprons and the access roadways, and the parking will be restricted to already paved areas currently served by the Bank of America parking area. The building is gonna sit at the rear of 984 Main Street and accessed only off of Main Street. The remainder of the site includes the access driveway from the street, the apparatus, apron, supporting utilities, generators, transformers, and dumpsters, and access to the parking on Bank of America's site for all staff and visitors to 986 Main. The land swap was done in order to provide greater maneuvering room for the fire trucks as they exit the building and appropriate turning radiuses as they return and back into the, their apparatus space. So it was a trade of part of the driveway for part of their parking and redone. The fire department is gonna be on three levels. Level one is, the site is very tight, so the apparatus space and the support spaces and the building entry and the fire prevention will be the only space on the first floor. The second floor will be staff support spaces, the training room, and some staff offices, and then level three will have administrative offices and mechanical spaces. Obviously, the main portion of the site is to move the fire department's vehicles on and off the site as quickly as possible, and so they can get back and maneuver back into the site. This includes a 44-foot-long ladder truck, and so we had to push the building to the rear of the site. We call this our pork chop site because it has this long narrow bend to a wider rear zone. So the apron is going to accommodate the various lengths of the trucks, as well as visitors' cars and trucks. It cannot be a divided highway, but will include paving to distinguish the ingress and egress patterns of the trucks. Visitors will come up that main road as well, and then they'll take a right into the Bank of America site. Some members of the public will be there to visit fire prevention, some will be there to visit the chief or other officers, and some will be there for triage care. They do a lot of blood pressure checks, things like that, so there will be a public access portion, and they'll be parking directly adjacent to the front door. Just so you know, the apartment works 24-hour shifts, they start at 7:30 a.m., and they'll be parking, so the parking, when you park at a fire station, you have to have parking for the shift that's on and the shift coming on, they don't leave. No one leaves until the next shift is on, you know, there's, the building is always serviced by the staff coming on, and then administrators who work, administrators who work in a nine, sort of a nine-to-five shift. There is a training room on the second floor, and it has tables and chairs for 48 persons. Those parking spaces will be onsite, as well as other related town sites in the immediate vicinity. The building will have domestic water and fire service, sewer systems by way of the town, and refuse will be handled off of the apron. This is planned as a one-phase project with a 14-month duration, and all appropriate erosion control and plans for building, the building will be part of the documents. Because of the limitations of the site, including its overall size and irregular shape, the ground-level floor plan is quite small, containing only as much as required for those fire vehicles. The small footprint, we, with that small footprint, we could not get the rest of the program on the second level, so we had to go to the third level, so the overall height of the building is up at 52 feet. There are also changes to the setbacks because of the location on the site and maneuvering for the fire trucks. Some of the rear and yards and side setbacks are not fully met for the zoning goals, but of course, we are exempt, and obviously, our goal was to make sure that Chief Hazel's staff could quickly move the emergency vehicles on and off the site. There will be screening for the dumpsters and transformers and generators, will have minimal signage, but there will be a site sign, and then there will be monument sign to, monument sign, and then there will be some internal site signs to help people find out where parking is. There'll be a flag pole, the chief is bringing over the memorial bench and bell that are in front of the fire station right now, those will also be located on the site. We have a little presentation that we've done, and Steve Sadwick from the city, or the town, asked us to show it again tonight, show you how we put this together, gives you an idea, it'll match some of the things I've told you, so Amy's gonna show them.
Here we go. So, as Janet said, it's a bit of a, what we call a pork chop-shaped site, there's this long drive entering into it, and then the buildable area in the back of the site. And when we first started the project, what we were really looking at is the trucks that the chief was planning on housing here, and how we could get vehicle circulation to work coming off of Main Street, up this drive, and into the building. Trucks would have to come up here and turn around and back in to the building. So the first floor plan was really dictated by truck movement, and you can see, this is the first floor plan here in the early stages of the design, and it really is limited to truck bays and support spaces for the fire department, which include things like the gear room, laundry for the gear that they wear, ambulance storage spaces, and places for storing oxygen tanks and filling breathing apparatus tanks, as well as a fire prevention office on the first floor that the public can come into, the main entrance is right here on the corner, and then some permitting spaces, radio spaces, and spaces for triage. The first floor plan is, was really entirely dictated by function, and how we can get the trucks in and out of the site safely and fit them into the building. From there, the first step that we took was to look at the program and see how it could be divided up between two floors, because we knew we weren't gonna be able to fit this all on a two-story building. One of the things that the chief really wanted to make sure is that the second floor was the living quarters for the fire department, so that there would be quick response times from the bunk rooms and the day room down into the apparatus space, and similarly, the training room, he really wanted to have that on the second floor so that that could minimize the response time down into the apparatus space. What that meant was that the second floor plan was almost the same size as the first floor, but a little bit smaller, and then the third floor plan, which is all of the administrative offices, was quite a bit smaller than the second floor. We started to think about how this building was gonna look, we immediately sort of extruded the building and looked at it three-dimensionally, and realized that it needed a lot of order and organization to really try to make this into something that was gonna be aesthetically pleasing. So the first thing we did, which is typical for all of our projects, is we start to look at precedents, and we started to look at what other communities were building for fire stations around the country, and how they were coming up with designs that used forms similar to ours, where they had these stacking floor plates, and we saw that they had lots of large expanses for glass for letting natural light in, to, for the health benefits of the firefighters. And then we also started looking at materials, materials that would be durable and fit within the budget for the town of Tewksbury. So we started looking at different types of masonry products and things like fiber cement siding, which were low in maintenance, but could fit within your budget. From there, we started to develop some three-dimensional massing models, and this was the first pass at the massing models that we came up with, and you can see, we started to organize some of these stacking shapes, and come up with long expanses of blazing to let light into the, to the building. The main entrance here in the corner, we marked with a lot of glass, as well as the corner element here, we, we had a lot of glass to really make it noticeable for the community, especially since the building is set so far back on the site. As Janet mentioned, as we developed the design a little more, we had gone from looking at parking on a remote site to this agreement with the Bank of America, and looked at ways to improve the apron for trucks coming and going out of the station. The first floor plan was as small as it could possibly be, to try to maximize the size of the apron, but it was still gonna be quite tight for trucks maneuvering. So this land swap was proposed for, with 970 Main Street, with the idea that the town would give up this blue strip of land, and exchange, they would get this green area from the owner of 970 Main Street, which would allow them to have a much deeper apron, which would allow the trucks to come and go out of the fire station much more easily. And at the same time, this license agreement with the Bank of America was arrived at to give the town access to parking spaces in the back of the Bank of America lot for the fire department use. So the public would come up this drive, and then there'd be this connecting drive over into the Bank of America lot, and these spaces in the back would be available to them. These are the floor plans that we are working from currently. They're very similar, as you can see, to the ones that we came up with initially in design. The building is so tight on the site that there wasn't a lot of room to move things around, but it's the same concept, the first floor is apparatus and support spaces, living quarters on the second floor, and then administrative spaces on the third floor. These are the, or the current elevations are kind of difficult to see on the screen, but this is the view from Main Street of the building.
I think that's right. We have the plans, we have Lance Hill's a civil engineer for the project. And so we have the boards, and how would you like to go from here? So.
Probably stop by turn the light off, so I can move back to my spot.
Perfect.
We have the same images on boards.
From there, we'll go with Mr. Fallow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank the architectural firm, lovely ladies here, who, I had some questions about how the building looked aesthetically when we first got the plan. I don't wanna say what I called it, but it reminded me of a fast food bar that starts with W. Anyways, the colors, this, this is a centered town, and every building in the center of town is a colonial style. I understand making buildings with pitched roofs adds money, and so, albeit, which we saw there. After I, after they came in with this set plan and invited me and Tom Andrew and Steve Sadwick to review it, I had a lot of questions, and they answered every one, from building appearance and the outside. Building appearance from the outside, and most of the questions that I came up with then, I have some more now, but as I already asked someone. So, I'm very pleased with how the building, the building looks architecturally, aesthetically. Besides it's so set back and it has earth tones, it's, it will blend in very nicely for the area. I'm gonna stop there, but continue. There are some things that bother me on the outside, and as you said, it's a tight, tight block. In the, I'll start with the right-hand corner, which is a dull land, but it's the land of Bank of America, and we're gonna have the right to have the, allow the staff to park there, plus guests, visitors. I saw something today that bothered me, that I didn't really pay attention to before. Mr. Delaney and I were there, and all of a sudden we saw cars coming out of the church directly into that parking area that's going to be where all our men and women are parked. I don't know how that's gonna work out, so I need someone to explain that to me. Because does that mean on Sunday, when there's a lot of people at the church, that they use that for parking?
So, is a, is an unhritten agreement that has gone on for decades between Bank of America and the church.
Yep.
For when they have services, be it Sunday services or funerals, that they allow the pass through for the overflow to go into that parking area. We have accommodated our plan to allow that to continue, we don't wanna interfere with that as far as the connection between those lots.
Right.
So we don't want that, we don't wanna interfere with that. The parking situation for this building, when the center fire station is raised, the current center fire station is raised, the plan is to expand the center parking there for overflow parking for all center municipal buildings, and also expand green space. So, as far as the connection goes, we, we left that open. It's not heavily used, it's not commonly traveled on, but people do use it, the cut through.
We saw the cut throughs today, yeah. It wasn't just people who were gonna park there, they were cutting through.
They were cutting through.
Yeah. I don't think that's an aesthetic, a thing that we would want, a cut through.
No, we can certainly put signage to discourage that from people cutting through going forward, but I would be very hesitant to hold back from the conversations that we've had with the church management, the church management in Bank of America. It's just, it's a very good coexisting relationship that they have, and if we do require some signage to limit that, and I think with the way the parking is going to be right now is a cut through, because Bank of America does not use the back.
Right.
Big quarters of that lot.
Right.
So, I think once the parking plan is in place, and it is now not an easy cut through, I think that that traffic is gonna be reduced substantially.
We focused on Sunday service, but we also talked about funerals. Some funerals might have 100 cars. Where do they put the 100 cars?
So, much like elections, like we do here now, we have a parking plan that we move town office parking over to Bank of America. So, coordination between the church and the fire department, we can accommodate that. Again, if we know ahead of time, we can have our people park across the street to accommodate those, accommodate those times of when that happens.
This might have 24 cars. Crew going off, getting off, and crew coming on. That's 7:30 in the morning, early in the afternoon. So at 9 o'clock, could be a mass for a funeral. And I've seen over 100 cars of them up here, but of locations. How are we gonna control about it?
The same, like I said, if we have advance notice, the people coming in on the day shift are gonna be parking across the street, they won't even be there, so when the night shift goes off and leaves, the parking spaces are open. So, we'll accommodate the 40, 41 parking spaces.
How many parking spaces?
There's 30 in this location.
30 on the fire department side, plus the Bank of America side, which has another 31 or 32 parking spaces there.
We haven't changed the total number of parking spaces, I mean, we've added a few and rearranged, so we're not, we went, we're not increasing the capacity of the church to have a bigger funeral, I think they'd have to park somewhere else anyhow, so.
It's gonna be a management issue, but we'll have to, and we've had a mild winter. I wouldn't wanna be trekking across from the station to my car, or from my car over the other side of Route 38, to the fire station during a blizzard across 38. It's just, again, the terms tight block. I have a lot of others, but I'm not going to take all the questions. I have one other, one thing that bothers me, though, like, I see the plan next door on Mr. McDonald's property, it looks like he almost has a hanging-on, hang-on site work plan here, whereas he's using this plan to say, oh yeah, by the way, Plan Board, I'm coming back in here with a, I'm gonna tear that building down and put some professional building in there, because I've seen a lot of new parking spaces coming around, but that brought this question to mind. The driveway coming out of the fire station to take a right turn, the radius right against the fence, as it has to be, or maybe it doesn't, but it is, the radius straight out to the lot line. You follow what I'm saying? I don't know, you can't, well, that's what they're looking at, yeah. But there's a, next door, there's a driveway coming off his lot for entering, or it looks like it's wide enough for both, but maybe just an entrance? Yeah, it would be just an entrance, based on the angle to the parking spaces. Will those radiuses of the curb and driveways be able to meet? You think they will? Yes. Okay.
We looked at that specifically. There is a one-way in coming in.
Right.
On the, to the right, that's the one way out on the other side.
All right. And I'm gonna leave the driveway, the rest of the driveway conversation to Mr. Delaney, I don't wanna take a thunder, because he has a question about that that he, he brought up, and I don't wanna think I stole his insight.
Go right ahead.
Insight.
No, 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 okay. You're right, I might go do your thing. You know the way I feel.
Yeah, tuna can, okay.
Most important building in the town, and we're trying to fit it in a tuna can. That's the way I look at it. Unfortunately, if this is all we've got, we're gonna have to deal with it, but that's the way I feel. You know, the parking spaces down in the back, for some reason, rather, what do we have, 60 parking spaces? Do we have that many?
In the overall lot, there are, what is, the agreement was 30 lot, 30 spaces for the station.
But I read somewhere in all of this that we needed, we have 48 chairs, so that means we could have 48 people. And if they're gonna have a meeting, and they're gonna have 48 people, where are we gonna put them?
Again, across the street, when the fire station is raised, expanding the green space and expanding the parking area for the center. They, we are going to work with the state, it seems like, but we're working with the state to have a traffic control signal at that, so that it's a safe pathway across right now, not too safe walking across there in the crosswalk on 38, but there will be a traffic signal there with crosswalk.
I didn't mean to steal your thunder, Bob, you can continue.
Thank you, that's all right, I just, you didn't say what you wanted to say, I'll let you hold on to that. Snow storage. We asked the question, and Mr. Hoddick asked, that was one of his questions in this plan, and looking at it, I know the fire truck, fire department has a pickup truck to plow, but they don't have a vehicle to pick up the snow and push it, and put it somewhere else. And I'm not talking about the parking in the back of Bank of America, I'm talking about the front apron. Where are you gonna put that snow?
We have designated the strike area. We, we have designated the strike area along the driveway as a snow storage area.
Okay. So you're going to have to push the snow all the way from then.
And, and there's also a snow melt system that's going to be under the.
Oh, really?
...in the apron because of the snow storage issue.
I didn't see that in my, in Georgia. I'm going to wait for the rest, because I don't want to be, I don't want to be the only one talking. All right?
What's that? I think we'll seamlessly move on to Mr. Delaney.
Yes.
You know, I, I, he said for me to use this statement, but like I said, I think it's the most important building, or one of the most important buildings that we have in the town. That we're squeezing it in like you're packing tuna fish in a can. That's what it looks like to me. The parking. We're looking at, how many people are on a shift? How many guys are on a shift?
Generally, six to seven.
Plus?
In that station.
Plus you and, is that including you and the secretary?
No.
And everybody else?
And there's probably four more on the day shift.
Okay. So the, and the shift change is at 7:30 every day?
Seven o'clock, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Like I say, now, the parking lot down in the back of the bank, is that blocked off so it don't, everybody can go in and out the entrance of the fire station?
Uh-huh.
Or is there going to be a fence there?
No fence.
Is what I think what I'm saying.
No fence.
But is that just the erosion control?
That's the erosion control. I'm assuming that's what you're saying.
Yes, down in the back. So the thing is, it's not going to really affect the, the church area, okay? Another question is, with the taking away of the land of the McDonald's residence and the, the bank, does that affect their property? And like their snow, their snow load, McDonald's property, his snow load, by taking away the property, do we have to take care of McDonald's property and the bank's property as well?
When you say take care of, what, what do you mean? They do have snow, snow storage capability, availability on Mr. McDonald's property and on Bank of America's. We do not, we're not going to maintain their properties as far as snow goes.
Okay, but the, does it affect his snow, is what I'm saying, by him taking away so much of his property? You know, he's not all of a sudden going to push all the snow out into a driveway?
No.
Coming in and coming out?
No.
Okay. The next question I have is, when the fire truck is leaving, and it has to take a right onto Route 38, does it cross over Route 38 to the other side of the road? To the other lane coming, you know, we got a north and we got a south.
Let me just be very clear, it will not, correct?
It will not, no. We, we ran it through Auto Turn, which is a computer program, running the types of vehicles that they use here. That's one of the reasons that we have with the island down the middle of the driveway, and we have it flush there. We have it flush because the, the truck is going to have to make a swing, and by, by doing that, it's going to stay inside of the W O line on 38.
Now, the, the next thing I guess I have a question about is, are we going to have traffic lights installed? Because I don't see the traffic lights now for the in, you know, to hold up the traffic so the fire truck can get out, or the ambulance can get out.
So it's a state road, and we're, we're currently working with town on traffic study out here. I would presume that there's going to be some kind of a traffic signal at some point at the end here, and coordinated with the traffic signal that's at Main Plaza.
Okay, so the thing is, when we look at it, do we only have to be one set of lights, or will there have to be two?
So my, my presumption is that it will be a, what we call a preemption signal, where when the button is mashed in the fire station, then it'll come on. Otherwise, it'll remain flashing yellow.
I, I understand that, but the thing is, we got traffic coming, you know, north and south. When the fire truck comes out and takes a right, you know, I, but I think you've answered my question, because I was under the impression that when that truck come out, it would go over the center line of Route 38. But if you're telling me it's not going to happen.
That's correct.
And we, we have a truck that's 44 feet. When it comes out, it can make that turn.
Can. If you'll notice, that's why we have a, we have the driveway kind of swung out at the entrance there. It swung a little bit wider there to accommodate a truck coming out of that, that driveway.
Okay. So the thing is, what are we doing, are we doing anything for the abuddies to accommodate this land swap and so forth? Is there any?
We've worked out an agreement with Mr. McDonald's to take care of. It's all signed and it's agreed to, because we have to relocate his, when they did the sewer work on, in town here, they avoided going down, for the most part, going down 38. So that property, Bank of America's property, the fire station's property, the sewer line actually comes in on the backside from where the electrical leasement is. So relocating his sewer connection where his sewer connection comes to the back of his property, we're relocating that and connecting him to town sewer and taking away his septic system.
Okay. Then the, probably, you know, I have a million questions, but I don't want to get carried away completely here tonight. But the thing is, the signage, you know, to prevent people from driving in and driving up in front of the, the door where the fire truck is going to come out. You know, is it going to be signed, commercial vehicles only or whatever, the signage will be there.
Yes.
To protect against that and make sure they go down into the parking space where they're supposed to be.
Yes.
Okay, I guess I'm pretty well set at this point. I had a mile of things to go, but we'll go from there. I just, the screen fence, you know, along the, the north end of the property, are we going to put a fence down in the back where the railroad tracks are too? Is it, there's no fence down there?
No, there's no fence proposed back here. There's a wall that is.
There's a wall and there's a rail.
There's a rail associated with that.
As long as it, what I'm looking at, as long as it's not affecting the abuddies, you know, with their snow load and so forth, okay? I'm good. But like I said, it's, it's awfully tight, really is. Every inch is, got to be counted.
Precious.
It is. It's the way I look at it. Okay, thank you. I'm all set.
Mr. Fratelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions. You mentioned we have a license agreement with Bank of America to use the land, is that what it is?
Yes, it's a license agreement.
License agreement.
We don't have it with me, but yes, we do have a agreement with Bank of America.
So we're asking leasing the land, is that what it is, or?
Yes, long-term, yes, there is a long-term lease agreement with, with Bank of America. And it's for fire department vehicles, personal vehicles, including pickup trucks and SUVs.
So let me ask you a question. If I'm a Bank of America customer, I go on the bank parking lot, use the bank, can I drive into the parking lot of the, of the fire department and access a fire department personnel?
You could.
Do you foresee that being done at all, by residents and?
It will be.
Rather than using the driveway?
They could. If, say, they had a business at Bank of America and they needed a permit at the fire department, they probably could easily either walk or drive over to, to the two.
Okay, all right. So looking at the plan, as I come down Main Street, I take a right into the fire department, right? So that's the in, in-road, the wider one along the fence, along the Bank of America, and then exit out the other way, right? So the fire truck, when he exits, is coming down and crossing that line to go right, correct? Crossing the center line of the driveway?
Good, yes.
He could, yes, he could.
He's going to have to, right? In order to.
If he's making a right turn onto Main Street, yes.
Yeah, he has to cross that center line and come in, right? All right, I understand. So, so why couldn't we get Mr. McDonald's property? Let me ask you that, right up front.
I don't want anybody to see me.
We, we've been talking to Mr. McDonald for a long period of time, and he's just not at a point right now where he's willing to part with the property.
Okay.
At this time.
That's unfortunate, because I don't like where it is, to tell you the truth. I don't like the, how far is the building from the sidewalk?
Building from here to the sidewalk?
Yes, from the sidewalk to the, to the sidewalk, as you come in all the way back to the, to the building itself, to where the apparatus.
At the scale.
I can't read it here. 225 feet.
Nope. There you go.
So I guess, Chief, we're spoiled right now, where you can pull up to the po, to the firehouse right now, jump out of the car with my daughter who's in distress, and walk in and get service right away.
You will still have that here.
200 feet away.
No, when you drive down the driveway, you, you're going to be parking right up against the fire station, so the business parking spaces are going to be right up against the station as they are right now.
Yeah.
Same entrance.
I'm just saying, it's 200 feet up the driveway to get there, rather than what we have right now, which you pull right in and you're right there, and you're out.
Well, you still have to drive downtown to all have, so I guess it's a trade-off, so yes.
All right, I just, I have a hard time looking at the, at the, how much of an investment is this in it for the town? You know, what's, what's the cost of the project?
About 19.5 million.
Okay.
That includes, that's all in, and we don't anticipate, we, we did receive from town meeting, another 2.5 million contingency. We will not use that if we do not need it. So, but the original project cost was 15 million. That was a couple of years ago. The cost escalations seem to be going up in six-month increments, so we just, that's why we went back for the 2.5 million as the contingency.
Nice, so figure, say 20 million by the time New York gets popping right.
That's $800 a square foot, the bill.
Recent projects similar to this came in right around $600 a square foot, a little bit over $600 a square foot for construction. For construction.
Construction.
Can I, can I feed Mr. Fratelli's question about the cost? I called the cost estimator today. Very nice gentleman. You know, when I told him, and I was told it was 18 million, I said, where'd they get that cost from? I said, I don't know, what's your cost? 13.5. So, of course, that doesn't include land, but McDonald's getting a good portion of the $6 million, he did pretty well. And no, he isn't. The difference, Michael, the difference between 13 and 19 is 6 million. What's the other $6 million going to?
Well, the construction costs is what I was talking about with the 600. When you start to get onto the owner's project manager, the contingency funds, the furnishings, that's when your, your other costs start to come in. So the construction costs, the big construction costs, not counting some equipment and furniture, that's when you start to get into that $6 million.
$6 million.
I, don't quote me on the $6 million as far as.
Well, that's the difference.
The town manager, it is.
Yeah.
But it's not, there was contingency put in there also for cost escalations that we don't have. Does the cost estimate have?
There's going to be a final cost estimate, it'll be stopped before they put out the bid, and.
We don't have that yet.
We don't have that yet.
So it goes from 600 a square foot, to about 800 and, more than eight, oh, more than 800 a square foot.
That's total project costs.
Total project cost versus construction.
Yeah.
So that's right.
Thank you.
All right, so just continuing, I just, you know, I look at the cost factor of the project and, and what the town is getting. So, so Mr. Chief Hazel, I'll ask you this. Are you happy with the design of this building as a chief right now?
I am. My, my only concern is the, is the turnout time, which is, right now, at the center fire station, we can take any door into the apparatus room from any part of the building. Through, with this station, we're going to have to traverse, if we're not already on the apparatus floor, we're going to have to come down a floor to go, to gain access to it, so it's turnout time. It's just the amount of time it takes to come down the stairs or down a hall to get to your apparatus. That's the only downside that I have with it. As far as the design goes, programming-wise, now and in the future, the, the design meet in the space meets the needs of the fire, fire department now and into the next 20 to 30 years.
You know, I know we need a fire station, and we need a good fire station for our firefighters and emergency personnel. So how much, how much were they involved in the decision-making and plans for this thing and their needs, the firefighters, lieutenants, captains, and so forth and so on? Just curious.
At, pretty much from the beginning, it went out to all the shifts and to give feedback in the planned design, and we took a lot of that feedback and brought it and rolled it right into the plans. There's a lot of things, especially things where amenities came in, proper weight, proper physical fitness equipment in areas, proper gear washing equipment in physical facilities of what, it's kind of hard because, you know, the south fire station has a lot of those things right now, but we've been living out of a station built in 1965 for a quasi-call department, full-time department. So you don't know what you don't have, you know, until you get it, kind of thing. So they gave everything that they could think of that, you know, would be beneficial to them and that performs to their duties, and we did incorporate those at all levels, from the firefighters right up to the captains, and the captains, we, we have monthly staff meetings, and this is on the staff meeting notes pretty much every month of where we were at.
Because reading the plans, I happened to see level one apparatus.
Yes.
Level two, you know, bunks and so forth. Now, I just seen level three, I'm like, is that unusual, a level three in a firehouse?
It's not absolutely typical, but in this particular case, the site is tight, and, you know, we, we had to, we had to make compromises. We had to look, oh, hi. So, you know, it's, we have done three-level fire stations, site-driven sometimes. It's usually the site that, you know, does that. So it's not, you know, I wouldn't say it's the most typical thing, but it's not also uncommon, so.
I just, I just view something where a firefighter's up on the third floor for some reason, and a car comes in, you know, all of a sudden they have to traverse three floors to get to the apparatus, time-wise. You know, so I got visions of maybe, is there any way of eliminating like floor three and putting it somewhere else in town? I mean, that's your, your stations and your, your, your staff and your training facilities?
Not, not with planning for future needs of the, of the department. You would be giving up the future needs of the department if you, if you took that third floor and tried to smush it down.
I'm not saying smush it down, I'm saying take it all completely and put it, add it out to South Street or something, South Street Fire Station or something like that, or, if it's administrative-wise only and, and training-wise only, but I mean.
It's just administration that's up on that third floor.
Right, okay.
So it's not, it's, the original plan was the third floor, the training room being on the third floor. We do training every day of the week, so that room gets used a lot. Right now, it's our, our day room in the center. So that room gets used a lot. That needed to be on the second floor and not on the third floor, because that would really be a daily problem as far as response times go. But being where it is on the second floor, there's a set of stairs right there, there's a fire pole right there, two sets of stairs, there's another set of stairs on the far side. There's, you know, many fire stations right now are built the same way. Westford has a similar station, similar setup with theirs, as far as where their living quarters is above when they come down to it. So there are a lot of, this is being built in because of space and design and functionality, a lot of stations are being built on the two-level system. Three-level system, again, it's the administration for the most part that's up there, so it's not, the firefighters are not going, that's not their normal living quarters or working quarters on the third floor.
Great, thank you. I'll add one more question, I'll have to go, because I will be here for a number of weeks, I'm sure, if I just get it resolved. So looking into the future, what happens in the event Mr. McDonald does want to sell? What, what's the plan going forward? I mean, we have a firehouse that's 200 and something feet, we'll sell.
You're not going to, you're not going to build a new station like you're already having.
Oh, that's not, that was my next question, Mr. Fowler, is, we have a station that's 200 and something feet from the street, and it all becomes driveway? and it all becomes driveway? I mean, if Mr. McDonald's family eventually passes or one now wants to get rid of the building and says to this town of Tewksbury, listen, we're looking to sell the building, you're interested in it? Who said, oh, absolutely, but, so now we have two hundred-foot driveway to the building that's set in the back. So, I mean.
Well, it's.
It's just, uh, it's just mind-boggling that we have to decide and settle on this particular design and location for, for the residents of Tewksbury, for a two hun, for a twenty-million-dollar project or whatever it is, so. So, I don't know, maybe you don't have the answer, but just a, a concern of mine of what happens if in the event, you know, the family says, oh, listen, we don't wanna live in Tewksbury, we wanna keep this house up. We wanna sell it.
He knows that we are interested in that front property.
Right.
And, um, I think that there would be a very beneficial use that we could put to it for town uses, uh, on that front property if the town were to take it off, but we're just not in a position where that's not on the table.
That's really unfortunate. Okay, I'll send it to you, I'm taking it. Mr. Rata.
Thank you. You mentioned, uh, you're working with DOT for, uh, permanent preemptive signage, signalization for a preemptive sign?
Yeah, we're, we're working with along the traffic study.
Yeah. Will that, I mean, obviously you'd need that as a requirement for occupancy. I mean, what, what are you looking at, this fourteen-month build? What are you looking, I mean? What's the turnaround time when you haven't talked to DOT, what's their, are they receptive to it? I mean, cause I, I'm telling you, I've worked next to a fire station, I see that truck be twenty-five times a day. It doesn't follow a straight line. And it's gonna come out of that driveway, it's gonna cross that double yellow line. I mean, you, you've got a common driveway coming in, you mean, you're gonna get people, they're gonna use the church, you're gonna get people to use a bank, it's a public driveway. You have potential to be a car coming in that entrance when that engine's coming out. He can't take that turn. He can't cross the rumble strip. So the, his choice at that point is to come out and cross that center line.
What we, what we have planned here, you'll see a kink in the driveway here, and we did that on purpose. If you have a vehicle coming in here at the same time, there is time for the vehicle, for the truck coming out of the station here. Uh, you have time for these folks to pull over into the strip area.
That's a little large.
To still allow them.
Right, but. You bet, you mean, you, you, you get a February winter like you had two thousand and fifteen, that's full of snow. Where's the car gonna go, where's the truck gonna go? They have to have every scenario.
But we did, and, and again, we looked at this here, they, they, if this is open, you know, that's obviously the best spot for them to pull over. We're, we're presuming they're gonna pull over down in this area here as they see somebody coming out of here. And that does allow enough room for this truck to make the turn.
Mr. Rata, can I just ask a question on that part that you just asked, cause it just occurred to me?
Yeah.
Do you plan on putting some sort of signage in there to indicate to a car as it's coming in that if the engine's leaving, even though they would think they're in the right lane, they belong in?
I'm concerned they go to the opposite side.
To, to get it out of the way.
Yeah, we, what we, one of the comments back, that come back from the planning department was, uh, installation of arrows in here.
Yeah, but arrows is, and I don't mean to step on your thing, but arrows isn't, I'm, that's not gonna tell someone pulling in there. You, this area we have set off over the side is where we want you to go if a fire vehicle is looking to exit the property. If somebody doesn't have a sign that specifically tells you, move over into this area, because you wouldn't know that that's what that area is for if you're just entering. Does that, does that sound right to anybody?
You know what happens, Michael?
Steven? Steven? I feel so unmemorable.
This is the first thing that happens. Someone gets in a situation, and I've seen it, we've all seen it, dozens of times.
Freeze.
They stop.
Freeze, they stop.
That's what happens. That's what I'm afraid of.
I, that's my biggest concern, you can, that, I, I.
And they're not that.
That truck is gonna cross that double yellow line.
And they're not gonna take the time to read the sign.
More times than a wall. And obviously, the response, it, it's their response. They're not concerned about not crossing that yellow line. As much as you put into the program that, guys, we gotta turn over the rumble strip and we, we wanna take a right-hand turn, you gotta, that, they're gonna cross that line. I'm concerned that we have, you know, there's a potential there for one, two cars in that lane when you're turning. And now you're coming out onto, uh, thirty-eight traffic. As you know, you see it daily with the thirty-eight backed up. We, we had numerous, you know, developments come in front of us. I understand we're exempt, but we have numerous developments come in front of us on thirty-eight. And we talk about, you know, the impact of the traffic coming in and out of the, the site. And, you know, we have to, uh, you know, hold the town to the same without worry. And I think by not addressing those, I think we're, uh, we're looking at a serious concern.
I, I, I think we can certainly work for the chief to come up with some, except for the signage.
I mean, I, I think you may need something that's, as far as your preemptive, when you push that alarm, it tells a vehicle to push over to the side. Something that you can tie in with your preemptive, uh, signage. Now, are you gonna go where, do you have a location? I don't see on the plans where your preemptive sign is gonna go.
Uh, not yet, you know, it, that's gonna, that's gonna shake out from, uh, the, the study itself. But I would imagine, you know, if I'm speculating here, that, uh, signal would be here, spanning the road, stopping traffic in this direction.
I would think, you mean, you're looking at.
And tied in with the signal down here, which will also, uh, block traffic up. So, you know, the, um, ideally would provide a clear zone at this intersection for the fire.
So you're thinking the signal here, now, when I, I think for preemptive, I want, I wanna clear what your response time is leaving the, the bay to the time it enters thirty-eight. And you have to look at the speed of travel and how many cars you anticipate clearing that zone. So you may need to pull that, those preemptive signal back. By the back, north and south part. So you have the ability to cross that link if necessary. So you may need to come prior to the McDonald's, uh, the property there and prior, uh, you, you're, you're in a tough location before the bank because it splits there. You have two, two locations in traffic coming into that.
That leg coming down there is, is a challenge for sure.
It's a challenge, where you have to address both sets of vehicles coming into that if you're gonna put a preemptive signal there. And then you talked about a crosswalk. You're gonna tie that, you know, get a multi-use signal that you're gonna tie that preemptive sign into a signalized pedestrian crosswalk.
That's something we'll have to work with the state on to do that. It's, that, that, the center really needs that.
It's, it's just, your, your four lanes, you mean, comfortably. That's a couple of things I, I won't beat down to death, but I, I'm looking at the, the property next door. If you look at, um, what is laid out for his parking, he doesn't have enough snow storage. That's one corner. If you look at what he's got for, um, asphalt in that area, that's not gonna be enough snow storage in that corner.
Yeah, we, we did take a look at that. He's got, uh, existing, he's got twelve spaces there. Uh, we provided fourteen on this plan just because it lays out that way. Uh, what we anticipate is this corner and these two parking spaces to be part of this snow storage area.
Well, that's, I mean, that's a concern using, considering parking spaces as snow storage. Technically, that's, I mean, you can't, I mean, you can't have one, it means either parking or snow storage.
But we, we do show, um, an operation and maintenance plan, uh, that we submitted to the town engineer, the, um, snow storage location here, snow storage location here. There's a little small island over here, we might pick up a little bit. And then there's a small area around the corner of the building that we could pick up.
Okay. You also mentioned, um, you're putting a, uh, a melting system within the pavement? Is that, what's that, I mean, can you decide what system you're using there? Or is that something you're just doing on the concrete apron? Or is that something that you're bringing on to the asphalt?
Yeah, it would extend out into the asphalt area. I don't know the name of the system, but the, the mechanical engineer specified.
And then, uh, also, generate location. What, what are you planning for, um, noise control there? Obviously, there's next door resident, two residential fossils, um, which will cycle quickly. So, has that been addressed with that?
Uh, we'll have to talk to the engineer about it.
I think, I'll draw a few more.
Mr. Dillane, you had something?
Yeah, the, one question. Was it definitely necessary to give Mr. McDonald ten feet? That ten-foot strip of land would have made the driveway and everything a lot wider.
Here?
And a lot more probably.
It was because we, we had to put angled parking spaces in there and the town bylaws have a little bit longer angled parking spaces to allow for the traffic to get through there. It just wasn't really possible to give, uh, to, to give less than that and still maintain a landscape buffer for a fence and, and the other things.
So the thing is, that ten-foot strip is gonna be a fence there?
Here, yes.
Yeah.
So when they plow the snow, they gotta, well, okay, I'm off.
So, the, the best way I can, I can describe this is, is that there seems to be an awful lot of shoe-horned things being done to make this work. And some of them sound like they, 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 they require the best-case scenario to be less problematic. I mean, not the least, I mean, the distance that was pointed out for how far back this building is was more in, I think when Mr. Fattali mentioned, it was more in the idea of someone getting to the building. But I think as Mr. Rata pointed out, in our typical New England winter, that's a long way to have to keep clear for emergency vehicles to get in and out of a place when it's the main fire station in the middle of town. That's a long way to go if we have bad snow to try and keep that distance clear. I mean, the warming up the ground is all well and good, but when there's two feet of snow on top of it, that is not a, you know, not something you can keep up with, with some coils in the ground. I, I have concerns about the ability of cars to be able to come through there from the other sites to go out that entrance as well and getting in the way. You know, when they realize that they're backed up at some of these other entrances and decide to go right through the back parking lot, and now all of a sudden they're jamming up the exit area. Like, once you're up there, there's nowhere to go, it's not like you can get out of the way anymore. Cause if you're heading out that, that exit, as if it's a public exit, you know, there's nowhere to go, there's no pulling over, there's no getting out of the way. At best, you've now got the fire engine going fully around who knows how many cars into the in-lane to try to come out and do right, left, whatever. If cars are allowed to be going through there and exiting just cause they don't wanna wait for the line at the church or the line, I mean, it's just, having cars come that, from that many sites to be able to come through there because they don't wanna wait at the exits for the site they're actually on seems concerning. I mean, you, you guys have, I think you, you have a response in here to the, the litany of things that the town engineer sent? Is that right?
Yeah.
Without going through the enormous amount of responses to the enormous amount of comments, is there any in there that are problematic?
No.
No.
No, not at all.
Okay. When you guys come back at some point, you know, cause we, we ask this pretty much of everybody, but I'd like to see some renderings of how this looks when you're looking at it from outside. So for, more specifically, if you happen to be standing on the sidewalk across the street, would be the one I'd be thinking of first. Because I'm curious to Mr. Fowler's point about sort of the design. It works, you know, sort of, um, for your purposes, but the, the point is, is made that this is in the center of town. And everything else that we've had in front of us in the center of town, we've pushed to have a certain look. So it's functional. I don't know what it looks like aesthetically and how much you can see it from. I mean, it's so far back, I don't know, it may not matter because it's so far back. But, you know, there are some small aesthetic-type things that could probably be done to give it a little bit more of a look of the other things that we, we've pushed for in town center that aren't, you know, aren't major changes. They're just more, you know, it's bells and whistles, not, you know, major, you know, structural changes or anything. But before I'd even mentioned, I'd be curious to see what it looks like from a rendering, from what people actually be able to see going up and down Main Street or if they're standing across the street, you know, at the, um, the, the town commons and they're just looking across the street, what does it look like? How much of that building can you see? You know, so I'm, I'm curious. I mean, I'm guessing, you know, Bank of America's pretty small. You know, I mean, I think you're probably gonna be able to see this building. You know, it's three stories tall. But I'm not gonna make a presumption without seeing some renderings of exactly what it's gonna look like or what people can see. It's a pretty major project and it's going in a pretty prominent place. So, you know, if, if it, if it needs, you know, a little bit of tweaking in terms of its look. Cause right now, I mean, it, it's functional, but it has that look of basically, you know, it's like containers stacked going on top of each other. That, that's kind of how it's set up. I mean, that's what it looks like. It's sort of boxes dropped on top of each other. I mean, they're moved around a little bit to make it look a little nicer, but that's really what it is right now. You know, maybe that works, but like I said, I'd like to see, um, a little bit more of what it looks like when people are looking at it. Yeah, I, I, I know this is what we wanna do and this is, we're sort of along the, you know, well, well down the path, but it does seem like there's some things here that we need to, to square away. I mean, I think you just mentioned the snow storage for the, for the, um, McDonald's property. And one of the places that they'd be pushing snow is towards the exit of the site. If for some reason they start over pushing, you know, and it's, it's pouring over onto the other side before they're getting in there to start, you know, hauling it out of there or whatever, it's gonna cause a problem. You know, if they're pushing snow and it's now coming up and over, if that's where they're starting to try and throw it to that side of the property, I, I don't know if that, that's good. You know, you, you pointed at the back corner, I believe, correct?
Back here?
Yeah, that's where you were talking about snow storage, right? The, right where that is, is basically right where your, your exit lane is. And there isn't much room between where they'd be pushing it and where your exit lane starts.
An exit for, th- this is not connected?
There's a fence, there's a fence.
There is a fence.
Right, I, I know, I know. How, how, how high is the fence?
There's no connection point between these.
I, I, I don't think there are. I'm talking about your exit lane from the fire station.
Here.
Yeah, going out. You, you've started throwing too much snow and you start having snow pouring off of their property onto what would be your exit lane on the fireside, is what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about going through there. I'm talking about what comes out of there if they're not trucking it out. I mean, I don't know what we've, what you've set up with them as to how far they're allowed to store their snow before they gotta truck it out of there, so they're not building up mounds and mounds and mounds which are pouring over onto the exit lane for the fire station. That, it matters. We do it with anybody who comes in because we tell them, well, we can envision where you're gonna run out of space. And if we don't tell you, you have to truck it out of there, you're gonna build the snow mound up until someone can ski down it. You know, and that's, that's problematic. So I don't know what agreement or what requirements have been set up cause we're not really addressing their property, we're only addressing this one. But it matters. Yeah, like, I think as everybody else said, this is, this is very beginning time, so I'm, I don't wanna, you know, go round and round on everything, but I think everybody's sort of brought up several things to, to address already. You know, without getting into the, you know, the nitty-gritty of sort of the engineer's comments and that kind of stuff. You know, hopefully that stuff sort of sorts itself out as you, you know, reach your agreements with the town engineer. Usually as we get a little closer to the end, we're down to the last few and somewhere we, you know, we, we chime in at that point, but, um, so in looking at your answers, it looked like you agreed or would address all of them. So hopefully most of those will all be resolved before we even get done with any of these other things. So, but with that, I'll open it up to the audience, anyone, oh, Mr. Fowler?
Yeah, just a couple more things. How did we get to do some of Mr. McDonald's work on his site? Is this part of the agreement in getting the property, we would grow a plan, a rough plan for him?
Yes.
That's the first, I hate to tell you that. But it, it does bring forth the fact that it looks like with this, oh, he has plans for this expedition. And it helps knowing now, okay, we don't have the one driveway, we're gonna have two driveways over there. So, you know, that's where the snow. So, you know, that's where the snow, no snores comes up. Let's get back to the site. One thing that stuck out very, very, very pointedly to me, the location of the dumpster. Again, you don't have many spaces. Someone backs in, whether it's a front loader or a back loader dumpster, you know, trash maker. When they pull in, they're gonna be blocking two doors for, could be at the wrong time. That's not a good thing, right?
No.
No, okay. So, if, if there's another place, I mean, you could put that, you could flip-flop the generator, flip-flop the dumpster so that it's away from, I mean, I don't, you might have had a reason for doing it that way, but to give you, how often are you gonna go to the generator? Not every, not every day or once a week or anything, whereas the dumpster is gonna be emptied probably once a week, minimum. Just a thought. We talked about East Street, not East Street, but the lights and everything. I talked with the state, and not specifically about this, but about some other things. The rest of 38 from Colonial Drive to Old Boston Road is going to be done this year. And they have said to me that East Street's gonna be closed off. So, doesn't affect the fire station at all, except, fire station still has in and out, the bank has an in and out, anything beyond that, which is the church, only has East Street to come in off of, whereas before they would come out and jump right onto 38 when they access that, that's the exit. And will we go do that anymore? So does that mean that they're gonna, someone's gonna say, well, we can go out the back? So now instead of just a few people using that as a cut-through, that could turn into a very popular, oh, we can go out the back and cut through the bank, or cut, cut through the fire station. I would hope they cut through the bank, because the bank is open to the stalls and the fire station. So that's just something, if you didn't know about it, now you know about it. If it, if that comes to fruition, then it's planning for the future. And the reason they want to do that is because that's a dangerous, uh, coming onto Route 38. You gotta do this, just look down Route 38. And they don't like that, they want ninety-degree turns. So, said this before, again, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Sure, I, I, one other, you, you had mentioned that the, you kinda went through all this with the rank and file and got their feedback. I was curious, what was the feedback for parking basically where the current fire station is and then heading over to the new fire station because of the potential, you know, whether it be funerals or whatever that you might need to accommodate by not allowing them to park at the new fire station?
It's, I wouldn't say that there was discussion on that, simply because we don't really see it as being an issue in the short term or the long term. The Congregational Church is not St. Liam's Church, so the congregation is a lot smaller as far as the use of the church, the amount of people that are there. The plan before was to have parking on the backside, so the majority of pretty much everybody was very much in favor of this parking plan because of the fact that it's directly adjacent to the fire station, whereas the previous plan was on the back lot, which was a much further drive, in a more isolated area, so...
Right, but if, if compared to parking across the street past the Commons, if that were the alternative, would they have been okay with the original idea? What I'm saying is, of course they're in favor of a parking lot that's right next to the building, but if you then tell them they can't park there, that they need to park across the street a lot of the time, was, are they even aware that that's a possi, that that's a possibility for any time there's Sunday church, there's funerals being done, or, you know, whatever, that there may be a frequent amount of time in which certain shifts are gonna have to park, what, what is a fairly decent distance away, and as somebody pointed out, if it's wintertime, you know, that's a pretty decent distance to have, I mean, heck, it's two hundred and twenty-five feet just down the driveway alone. And you haven't even gotten across 38 yet or past the Commons, you know, from where you had to park. It's, I'm just saying, I, I'm curious if they were aware of that, that likelihood?
Not to the degree of...
Tonight?
Tonight, like you said, you know, just, it, it just was, it doesn't happen that often. We're, we're going through right now with, with the early voter registration in election days, that we sometimes have to park across the street. So it's, it's not, I mean, any, don't get me wrong...
Well, I'll put it this way, we, we've now brought it up tonight, and my guess is that will trickle out, so the next time you come back, I'll be curious to see if you've received any feedback on that fact from anyone. So I'll ask that question again the next time, and I'll be curious to see what the answer is then, now that it is something that's been brought up.
Okay.
All right, so anybody else with anything?
Just one question, one comment, Mr. Chairman, there's, you are aware, there's a, there's a, a school there during the day at, at the church, correct? So you guys aware of that as well? There's a pretty extensive school that's where my granddaughters and grandson go there or went there and so forth, but it's pretty well-attended, so I mean, that's traffic every morning, dropping off every afternoon, picking up on a regular basis, so. And they use that back door from the church to get out, so, okay, I'll say, thank you.
All right, so with that, I'll open it up to the audience, with anyone, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns?
The one on the table.
Which one?
The one on the table, because that one's not working.
Okay, so if you take that microphone from their table, and then you just state your name and your address, the floor is yours.
Certainly, good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jeffrey Dirk, my address is eighteen Rota Street in Tewksbury. So just a couple of things following up on some of the comments you have. The traffic control here is, it's very complicated, and I think that's what you're all kind of recognizing as you look at this. To install a traffic signal at this location and have it tie into the signal down at Pleasant Street, it's, it's gonna be very difficult to do that, not impossible to do. But I think that depending on who you've got for your traffic consultant, there's a lot going on here. And I think as they're looking at how that signal's gonna be phased, and not only how it ties into the signal at Pleasant Street, also how the driveways and the vehicles coming out of these driveways, what are they going to see when they're coming out and the preemption happens? I think there's just a lot going on, and I think that's a lot of the comments that have come up from the members of the board. So I, I think that's a very important thing to focus in on. The site plan things I think are great, all the comments you have, but ultimately the access into the site, it's something that's gotta be proven out. And I think that's, there's a lot of details to how that will actually happen in a very safe manner, number one. Number two, as you're talking about the off-site parking, it's, it's not just the, it's the length of the driveway which you think you're focusing on, but I think the other part of it is, what is the actual distance from where the firefighters might be parking that they would have to walk and then cross Main Street and then get to the site? So you're talking about them lugging their equipment and everything that they're coming in for the shift, what is the length of that distance, because it's, it's actually quite far? Then they've got to actually cross Main Street, push the push button, wait for a green light, and get across Main Street. So I think, you know, that's a consideration as well. And then lastly, in looking at the access into the site, really from an emergency access perspective, you don't want to have something that is dependent upon signs and pavement markings for a motorist to try to figure out, what the heck do I need to do to get out of the way of the fire apparatus that's coming through? Because as you said, it's kind of that idea of you freeze up. But the last thing you're gonna be looking for is a sign or a pavement marking to tell you what to do. You're looking at the big red fire truck coming out of there, and you need to know instinctively what to do. The last point on that I want to raise is, again, looking at the traffic control, this is a little different in terms of, I've designed fire stations and preemption systems and access into properties. What's a little unique about this site is the ability of others, other than fire department people, to use that driveway. And I bring that up as you're talking about the church and the overflow and then potentially using that driveway. So we all know the traffic patterns on Route 38, so now as I'm coming out of that driveway, and let's say we have a funeral or an event on a Sunday, when the vehicles are coming out, they're stopped, it's a flashing yellow signal coming out, so now I'm yielding to the traffic that's on 38. So if we have a backup of traffic that's queued on that driveway and a fire truck needs to leave, that traffic has all got to clear out of there before the fire truck can get out of the site. So again, it goes back to the control of that driveway and how that traffic signal's gonna actually operate. And if you have queuing on that driveway and the fire truck needs to leave, all those vehicles in front of that fire truck have got to clear that driveway, so the timing of that traffic signal is very critical in how it relates to the signal at Pleasant Street, because you've got to clear all the traffic out of there. In an ideal situation, there is, there's no mixing of traffic. You do not want public traffic using that driveway and emergency vehicles trying to exit. The length of the driveway again comes into play into how that is. So I guess there's a long way of getting to, there's a lot of details here to be able to make sure that it's safe for pedestrians and it's safe for the firefighters and the trucks trying to get out of there. And the way the interaction is happening with church traffic and this shared-use driveway, it's very important that that looked, is looked at in a very careful manner, so, you know, be interested to see what your traffic engineer has to say as to how that's all gonna function. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns?
Great comments, thank you.
Seeing none? Anything else from the board at this time?
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman, you brought up a great point as far as when, if, if there's somebody in that driveway and the fire truck is coming out of the, out of the fire station, now they're panicking, okay, what do I do? The normal response is to pull over, let them go by you, if they can. So I mean, that's a great point to bring up, and thank you for that, so. Hopefully we're gonna address that, if there's a car there. I'm just picturing my wife coming in out of there for some reason, or someone's wife, and then all of a sudden, the fire truck goes off and they're coming down the driveway, what do you do? Fly into traffic on 38, you know, just to get out of the way, or just freeze, and then response time is, is now reduced.
Well, and added to that, too, if they're in that driveway, they're getting the light that your truck is getting. So now they're gonna see a green light, and, okay, do I go? Do I not go? And if I go, where do I go? Because I really wanted to go out and go left. But if I go out and go left now, there's probably people stopped there because they all have red. So it's really concerning that regular traffic is on this, or could be in the way on this driveway. Obviously, you know, people want to be able to come in and out of the fire, this is the only way in and out of the fire station. But it would seem like the very, very, very littlest amount of traffic using this is the, the best way for this to work. Having that cut-through through the back, any extra vehicles that can be eliminated for being able to use that in and out, well, well, the out, the in, I guess, doesn't make as much of a difference, but just seems to be a much wiser way to go for all these possibilities. I mean, again, you know, in a best-case scenario, yeah, it's not gonna happen, but, you know, we're gonna have to look at this from worst-case scenario, you know, as Mr. Reiter pointed out, it's like, okay, it's a bad winter, it's a, you know, those are the things we have to throw in because that's what you want to be prepared for, not everything working like it's supposed to. You know, you, you work in a business where, that's the whole problem, is things aren't working the way they're supposed to. You know, and that's why they gotta call you. So, you know, you want to be able to be sure with this that you're not in any way slowed down any further than you need to be. You're, you already have the things that you're concerned with, with potentially being on the second floor and needing to get to the first floor. You've got the distance, you know, before you're, less than a second from getting out your door and you're already on the road from where you are now, to, you know, X, you know, two hundred and twenty-five feet to get from your doors out, out to the street. You don't need any more impediments at all between you and getting to where you need to go as quickly as you can get there. So, but, Mr. Reiter?
Have you, has, has there been a discussion with the bank about using the parking lot entrance and exit for all traffic other than emergency vehicles? As part of the, of these agreements? It would make sense, you have access already, keeping that access, you block off the access, the fire access only coming into the facility, and then this is the only, this is emergency vehicles entering and exiting. You'll eliminate potential issues if you can use those two entrances, the entrance and exit from the existing bank. There's an entrance on each side of the bank, cannot be used as part of the agreement to move traffic, and that would help with the agreement that, you know, already underwritten agreement that they have with the church. They can still access, come out, and, and they'll still eliminate any potential conflict on that emergency access only.
I think it's a more likely scenario of speaking with the, the Congregational Church and having a conversation with them, bringing up the concerns that you brought up here tonight, and potentially doing something about that access point, so, which is something to consider.
Well, I think Mr. Fowler's point is gonna be really important. If you lose that insane East Street piece, that doesn't begin to make sense anyways, but if that gets shut off and now there really is only coming in and out of the church on that little piece that's there, you know, that's gonna be important, because some people are not gonna want to have to come out of there, wait all that time to either take the right to go to the light or off on East Street, and they want to find a way out there, you're gonna find a lot more people trickling out there than now you might have, because they no longer have an alternative.
By using the bank, what Mr. Reiter was saying, by using the bank as the in and out for the employees, the easiest ones to train are gonna be the employees to go in and out of the bank. Okay, that's where most of the parking spaces are gonna be first, okay? To do that would eliminate forty-five minutes of the discussion that we've just had. In other words, if we're leasing that property from the bank, are we allowed to go through the bank to get to it? We certainly can park there and come out.
Yeah, I could already, I, I knew what he was gonna say before he said it, because I'd, I'd be stunned if, if they, they wanted that. They're not gonna want that.
You got that?
Yeah, no.
Talk to Mr. Montori.
It's a commercial business that's gonna be inundated with traffic that has nothing to do with them. I'd be stunned if they agreed to it.
Yeah, but they're allowing, well, of course, they're allowing you to park down there, but it doesn't stop you from not coming out the driveway. You're gonna come out the driveway if you park there, the only ones that'll use that is the, the employees. Because if somebody else, if I went in there and parked to go into the fire station, I parked down there, you think I'd go up the driveway? The exit of the fire department driveway, or would I just drive out the bank? I'd drive out the bank.
Right, but how it might work in, in practice and what they could get them to agree to on paper are two different things.
Well, again, it's one of the solutions if it can be done, and probably one of the better solutions that we would have, because no matter what you do, the driveway, I could see, I could see my wife driving down that driveway and the fire truck coming out. I know just what she would do, she'd put on the brake and stop. And you don't have time, when a fire truck is coming at you, you don't have time enough to read a sign that says, well, pull over to the right. You don't see the sign. My opinion. I'm all set.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, one other thing. So as to clear some of the issues relative to your driveway, gentleman behind you doesn't understand, we're gonna come back to them later. Could you do something like that to show the apparatus flow?
Sure, absolutely, yeah, we, we did something very similar to that to generate this design that you provided.
Yeah. And that way you'll see if there could be, in our minds, a conflict with public drives in the, the emergency vehicles. Thanks, thank you.
All set? All right, so, so this, do you guys have a preference as to, do you expect to come back for the next meeting, or?
I, I'm going to say yes, I think we should talk to Richard Montori tomorrow about this, but I would put us on the docket because the intent for the town is to go out to bid in the spring.
Okay, all right, so then, yes?
I thought it was gonna be another opportunity for the president to speak.
That was the, any other questions, comments, or concerns?
There was another... You guys all come talking, so excuse me. Thank you. Hi, Jane Wellman, 820 Shawshin Street. One thing that you were talking about vis-à-vis exiting the site and onto Main Street, I thought was a germane conversation. But one thing I didn't hear about was how that was going to affect response times. And one of the reasons this site was chosen was to maintain alacrity with response times. And so I would like to see that particularly addressed in the traffic study. If you're having queuing on the driveway, how that will affect... Because you were talking... The chief was talking about turnout time with a multi-story building, which I think is germane. But also, how is that going to affect getting an ambulance out onto the street and responding to, you know, an individual in crisis if there's cars on that driveway trying to decide left or right turns, that sort of thing? So that would be my request. Thank you very much. And a great presentation, by the way. Great. Thank you so much.
All right. I'll do it one more time just to be safe, then. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? All right, seeing none. We have a motion to continue this to 7:30 on March 9, 2020.
Some more, Mr. Chairman?
A motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we have that continue to our next meeting. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to Agenda Item D. 600 Ubin Street. This is continued from our 210 meeting.
Continue to...
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that at the bottom. So the applicant has requested to have this continued to the 9th. We already have it on here for...
7:25.
What time is it? 600...
7:25.
Oh, okay, 7:25. So can I have a motion to continue this to 7:25 on March 9? Motion made seconded?
Seconded.
Motion made seconded. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, that moves us on to Agenda Item E. 1037 North Street, 1547 Andover Street at all. Continued from our 210 meeting. All right, gentlemen, if you just ate an apple, I reckon the floor will be yours.
You, Mr. Chairman, Handy Street Civil Designs Consultants, John Feneris, applicant. So before I begin, we do have some revised information. We weren't able to get this compiled in time for the Thursday deadline. But if it's okay, I'd like to deliver it now.
Yep, feel free.
11 by 17s for the board, is that appropriate?
It's easier than trying to open the big plans here in the room.
So we have an interesting segue, right? Staying in line with the fire department.
The chief was kind enough to hang around, so...
So since we met last, the... I believe it was the following Friday, we had a meeting with town administration. And the... First of all, I'll spare the overall view, if that's okay with the board. I feel like we've been through this several times at this point. But we had a meeting with town administration Friday after the last meeting. It was Assistant Town Manager Steve Sadwick, the Town Engineer Kevin Hardeman was there, Stefani Gallo, the Conservation Agent, and Deputy Chief Vasis was also there. So at that meeting, there's continued concerns over fire access to and around and through this site is really what it comes down to. And I believe that was kind of further supported in the letter from Lieutenant Sawicki, which I presume the board received. I believe that was issued towards the end of last week, I think. What I have here, I've got two different plans. The top one up here is revised really based on the comments from the board last time. When we left, we've got these 18 and 1/2-foot parking spaces in front of some of these units and really kind of three pinch points in our turning radius in this area here, and then down here as well. So what we've done on that plan is tweak the staggering of those units. If you look at particularly Building 5, we've got two units forward, two units back. That configuration has been altered slightly without changing the setback waiver we're requesting. So we held that 33.3 feet, but did tweak that staggering. We also, on Building 4, we now have the two units furthest to the north pushed forward, and then two units further south pushed back. And we actually slid that building back a foot, foot and a half or so. So we're still within that... You know, we don't need a waiver there, but we're closer to that setback line. But I think... So now I think we have a situation where we're up to 20, maybe 22 feet in some places of this fire truck turn movement to those parking stalls. Oh, and I guess the last thing we've looked at, too, with the architect, is actually recessing the garages at those units, maybe picking up a foot or two there as well. Just kind of doing that on the interior so that a car could, in theory, pull up those two feet closer. So at the end of the day, we wind up in this 20 to 22-foot range of separation from the garage to where we show the auto turn movement and that fire truck sweeping through. I think what we have, though, and what's kind of become clear to me is that this is tight. It remains tight. I think it's obvious on the plan that this is tight for a fire truck. You know, we've implemented all the town specifications that we've received and done the best we can with all that data, turning radii, lengths, wheelbase, all that sort of thing. But I think it's finally... I don't know. I mean, I typically deal with these standards where if you're provided with a threshold, you meet it, you hit the standard. I think this is a little different because what we're showing is that a fire truck could drive through this site. But I think the real world... What's... Maybe this is... I'm late to the party on this. But the real-world application of this is that the fire department would like to be able to have a reasonable driver drive through this without needing to hit every little bend and turn that we show that the software is capable of. And that's a challenge here. I mean, this is tight. We're confident it can be done. We've done this according to all the standards we can. But at the end of the day, on this site in particular, if something doesn't work, it's tough as a person behind a computer to, you know, pin down what reasonable access means or what the driver's capable of and those sort of things. So if something doesn't work here, if it's determined that this site doesn't work, there's really no room to go. There's nothing that can change. We're pinned in there. We'd be back to this board for another setback waiver. You know, it's really built out. There's no changes that can be made that could make this better. But I did want to bring this plan, show you that we took the comments of this board to heart, did make those changes, and we've come up with what you see in that the revised C6, that's in the three-sheet packet that you have. The second thing we did...
Can I ask you one question before you shift to the new design or the old, new design?
Yeah.
Is there a reason... Because I asked this the other day. Is there a reason why the island couldn't be reduced? I mean, I only ask this more specifically now because you're about to show us a plan that doesn't have an island at all.
Right, yeah.
If the wider end of the island were reduced to allow the turn to be further in, which would get it away from the parking spaces, without losing that point piece, which is the part coming out to, you know, keep people from turning into the wrong side?
Sure.
Is there a reason that couldn't have been done?
Well, so what happens is that because it's neck down, like, it's not a cul-de-sac circle. You've got the largest part on the, you know, the west side of the plan there. If that turn movement, that 38-foot radius was pushed over, you'd wind up hitting the first unit there... I don't have the unit labels on this one, but in Building 5. It's just because of the... The units are sliding up and in. So as that movement moves over, we wind up clipping that driveway, and we wind up not able to fit those units in in Building 5 there. So really, the island is... Doesn't... It's there because it can be. But if it were to get shrunk or moved over, we'd wind up in a redesign or losing units or something along those lines.
So a smaller island wouldn't make the turn easier?
Correct, yeah. That's just pinned. I mean, that's a 38-foot radius. We can't do that any tighter than what it is. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So that being said, the second plan, there's two other sheets in your packet, is this plan here. And as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, this plan does eliminate the island. That being said, I think it maintains kind of the general intention or spirit of the island design. We lost the island, but we've also tightened up the site. The buildings are in a similar configuration to what we have in that island design. In this case, the fire department is provided with a three-point turn, excuse me, instead of a turnaround. But we've had this type of concept for, I don't know, we started with something like this. And the way it's been presented to me is that if it's a... As long as it's a three-point turn, then that is an acceptable way to leave the site. So full access to all of these units would be gained by driving directly to them. And then if a fire truck was to go to Building 4 or something like that, or even Building 3 up in the corner, it would perform a three-point turn and be able to leave the site. The other kind of benefits of this, I suppose, are the waiver remains the same. We still are requesting that 33.3 feet. But it's really only to that bottom corner of that building as opposed to the entire building. And then I know this isn't this board, but the impacts in the conservation no-build zone are drastically reduced. We're down from 9.8% of that 50-foot buffer to 2.2. So this is the first time we've presented this to anybody. So this hasn't made the rounds yet. We've really just been kind of working on it, kind of chewing over what our options were, how we wanted to kind of just proceed in general. But this is what we've come up with. I think part of this proposal, too, would be for sloped granite curb everywhere. Just based on the feedback we've heard, the vertical granite, again, the site is still tight. So if it's sloped, worst cases, they're at least not blowing out a tire. And then also along this entrance, this corner right here is... That radius was increased, too, just to add a little more space to make it turn in. So I think... Excuse me. Been fighting a cough for a couple of weeks here. But I know we talked about drafting a decision, and I think we'd reached some sort of common ground with this board at the last meeting. But the reality is, is with that current turnaround, there'd just be this kind of lingering fear that if it were to go to construction, we're going to have occupancy permits held up or something like that if it's determined in the field that it can't practically... The fire truck can't practically access the site. So we wanted to bring this concept. We could talk about the other one and then bring this one as well and just kind of get general feedback, and we'll see kind of where it goes from here, so...
All right. I'll start, Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some notes here underneath this mess. But, you know, reading the letter from Lieutenant Sawicki, there is no way I'm willing to go against their demands or requests to have the site non-compliance. I mean, there's just... There's just no... There's no reason for that to happen, you know? So I mean, I have to agree with them with the fact that, you know, like developers that come in looking for waivers, then we want to make sure it's up to snuff as far as that goes. And I sure hope we never need a fire truck in there. But in the event we do need one, then we need that access accessible all the time. So although I liked the first design, I mean, if we have to go to the new design you gave us, then we go to it. So because that's going to solve the problems with a three-point turn, so... And while the chief's here... Chief, do we have a problem with the three-point turn for fire apparatus? Or not?
Providing the AutoCAD allows for it. In real life, it works.
Okay. Oh, good. Great. All set, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. DeWey?
Yeah, we've been doing this for a year. Then all of a sudden, we get a letter, a three-page letter that says that the fire trucks couldn't go in, or it was tight, or whatever. That part, I don't understand why we didn't have that a long time ago. The new design, is it approved by the fire department? The new design that you're giving us right now?
So as I mentioned, this is the first time anybody on the town side has seen this. The next steps would, of course, be working with Anna and her staff and fire department and engineering. You know, we still have an engineering letter hanging out there from the last design, too, so... But all of that would take place presuming this was an option that was worth pursuing, I guess.
Well, the thing is, we approved an option the meeting before. We approved the option the meeting before that. Is this option here, has the fire department seen this option?
They have not, no. Nope.
So we don't know if we're voting on what the fire department wants or what the fire department doesn't want. You're just giving us a diagram of the three-point turn.
Correct, yeah. You know, this is in concept form. So the intent would just be if this was a non-starter with this board, then we wouldn't even pursue full design and things like that.
The thing is, the development, as long as the fire department... We're to the point now where the only thing holding this up for approval or non-approval is the fire department. And if we get the approval for whichever one you want to use, if I get the approval myself personally, if we get the approval that that's what the fire department wants, then I'll accept it. But that's what I... It all boils down. Not a question of the units or spacing or any of that. The approval of the fire department, and I'm good with it. I'm all set.
Thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
Mr. Vitale asked a question, which is a very good question because the chief is here. My question to you, Chief Hazel. I know I shouldn't have called him like that.
Probably Michael, but that's him.
And this is a quick look at it now. If you had your brothers, would you rather have radius? I mean, a radius around the island, the rotary, the roundabout, around the roundabout? Or would you rather have backups, the three-point turns, to get in and out of it remembering? You've got an ambulance going in there, it could be a long... Small vehicle, it could be a long. No one to get out and help them back up and that. So I guess I'm asking you a pointed question. You want to answer it now? That's fine.
Oh, no. If we have the option of a drive around radius that was workable, that is always preferred than to have to back up a vehicle.
Okay.
You shouldn't have to back up a vehicle unless you actually have to.
Can I just add something?
That's all.
Two things. One, I did not mean to put the chief on the spot here. I didn't know. But that was not... There was no intention of trying to, you know, get to this board.
I actually asked him to stay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it wasn't to surprise anybody with anything. You know, we just brought this for discussion. But just one thing, just about this design, I think that actually... I can certainly understand that point. At the same time, this design, the emergency services are to every unit faster. There's no need... For Building 5 before, you had to get around the roundabout There's no need for building five before, you had to get around the roundabout to service that building. So now you're right in front of these. I know we're probably talking seconds, but, you know, I'm just saying, like now you're, we're driving right up to them very quickly.
I'll throw this at you.
The runway.
That's right.
Go the runway.
That's right.
If there's an ambulance coming in, they're not worried about the direction of the arrows on the road, they're going to go right through building five.
The plan up on the truck right now, backing out for the people who live there, have nine driveways or parking spaces conferred from each side, not nine from each side, but total of nine vehicles converging in a small area all day long, whenever they move. So I think that's going to be a little bit of a problem for the people who live there, not not including the fire department, but for the people who live there. Whereas driving around, there's no one backing into anywhere on the other one. So that's all. Thank you. I know you've shook your head coming out, and some of these meetings have been pretty hectic. And I, I, for one, appreciate some of the the time you've taken, number one, in listening to our advice, our thoughts, and putting them on paper. A broken footing is moving the buildings around this last two weeks. That was a simple question, because it's a simple question, but it's a long term to put it on paper. Thanks.
And if I may, I think one design element I did not mention is that the driveways in front of the units in this layout are twenty-two feet on their own. So they're extended as well. So just to point that out.
On on the T-turn.
On the T-turn.
But not on the other one, right?
Correct, yeah. I mean, we'd have to extend waivers and things, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Ryder?
Thank you. You know, I think I'll just wait for the review of the fire department before I go through this again and again. So, you know, I'll wait through the fire department review, see what the letter comes back. Do you think you have that potentially? When do you plan on submitting this to the fire department?
Well, I think, well, we just submitted this today. I think probably some follow-up later this week, I think, with Lieutenant Zawicki and see if we can, you know, we'll give him some time to get the plan and and.
Okay, no, that's fine. No, obviously.
So we're also waiting on engineering comments.
Right, I know, we're still waiting on the.
And we'll be waiting on different engineering comments?
Correct.
If we change the, ask for the design to be changed to this?
Correct. I know Kevin's going to want to see drainage plans again on this, so I'll hold comments until we see those.
Lieutenant Zawicki's been very, I'm sorry, he's been very open to meeting. We've stopped by numerous times and, you know, even with this concept, I think we can get a general sense of what his first impressions were.
So so for my purposes, I I feel bad that when this other version, this version was brought in before, we told you we didn't like that version, that we preferred the version with the the island in the middle, the turnaround and all that. But what I think we have to come to grips with, one way or the other, because you still have conservation hanging outstanding as well. I I believe I'm under the impression that conservation was not, but is now aware of the fact that you can produce a plan that does less encroaching and that interested them. So what what the problem is, is that if we want to get them to stick with this island version, it's the one that causes the most need for waivers. And in order to make these spaces bigger, to get the real-life turnaround that the fire department's looking for, these still are at eighteen and a half. They need to grow to twenty, is it twenty and a half or twenty? What did they want it at? For for the SUV vehicles to fit in real life?
The example we talked about was twenty.
Twenty or long, okay. So you're you're still going to have to come up with another two feet on all these spaces, which means it's pushing you past the dotted line we see on there right now. I don't have a problem with that. It's just, I just, we need to decide, one way or the other, amongst not just us, but also conservation, that there's a reason we want this version because it fits the best even though it does those things. Or the smaller version, which now leads to the T-turnaround, which is not the preference, but it will work when you do it in real life, you can do it, it's not the preference. And as Mr. Fowler and I think Mr. Ryder pointed out, you're also closing down the area for everybody moving around in the site, which is what we were saying we didn't want. Anyways, that's one of the reasons why we went with that version. But we're going sort of round and round and round on this. But we, I think we all have to, not just us, but conservation, I think, we have to figure out that they're going to be, they're not going to, if we go all the way through sticking to this roundabout plan and coming up with the space necessary for the fire trucks to really fit, which is to get that extra two feet on all these spaces, it's going to push the buildings in order for that to happen. There's no other way to do it because the island can't shrink, which means the only other possibility is the buildings move back to give you the space. So if that's the case, then the buildings as we see them now, building five is going to encroach a little bit more than it is now. But all, the three of the other buildings will also have to do the same thing, actually, all four of them have to do the same thing, to do, to make that fit. I don't have a problem with it. I don't know if any of the other board members have a problem with it. I just don't know how conservation's going to react if they know that there's another version. But the reason we don't want the other version is for all the other reasons that it doesn't work. I mean, but I mean, we can't impose that on conservation, but I think they need to understand that there's a reason why we're going with this version. We understand that it has some encroachments, but the trade-offs for the rest of it is why we were pushing it that way. We weren't trying to not let them see the other version. It was just, it was brought to us first. We pushed you in this direction. I still think from Mr. Fowler's comments, it's, this is still the preferred version of this plan, is this design, but it has those issues. So I think that's the only thing that I I feel, you know, it's sort of a ping-pong thing going, whereas now, you know, the the trucks don't quite fit. So your choice is either push the buildings back and keep this design or go to the T. The T makes it less encroaching, which might make conservation happier. I don't know how it matters to the rest of the board, but it doesn't give the fire department their preference of having a turn radius. Instead, it gives them the T-turn. So somehow we got to figure out how everybody's happy. And so you can go forward with one plan and not have to keep bringing us in alternatives to the alternative, to going back to the old alternative, that it's just, it's going round and round and that doesn't seem productive to me. So, you know, do you know what I'm saying? And I think that we've, we've got to get everybody in one preference. And we need an answer, I think, from conservation as well on where they stand.
So I can, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Fowler?
Go right ahead.
I I was just going to say, we were at conservation last week on Wednesday with this plan, the the current layout. There was really no comments from the commission themselves. But what I will say is that plan has nine, so we're, it's, it's, I'm not even sure what the right term is, it's not really a waiver, I think, for the no-build zone. It's, there's a list of criteria that you need to hit in order to be allowed to do it. But one of those criteria is ten percent of that no-build zone. So we're at nine point eight. And granted, there was no comments, no negative, there was really no comments either way on that nine point eight. So I don't feel like we're in a bad standing with them, but it doesn't leave us any room to encroach further.
So you can't move the buildings?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we could do something like move one of these units over to here, and then you've got a five-plex or something like that. But that, now, now we're pushing the limits of size that we've talked about in prior meetings, too. You know, you could take one of those out, push them back, you know, there's some opportunities. This, to me, remains kind of the only untapped space on the site where something could fit and still not need a, not need a relief from from any setback or anything, like not even be in the buffer zone potentially for conservation, but.
Well, I guess I'd ask the, I I sort of pull the board on this then. In the event they moved one of the buildings over to that side, so it will become five on that side, is that a deal breaker for anybody?
I don't think so. I think, you know, they've shown that the architecture and, you know, the aesthetics of it are going to meet what's going on in the neighborhood. I don't think one more unit is going to change.
Do you feel, Mr. Delaney, agreeable to that?
Yeah.
Mr. Vitale?
I'm also.
Mr. Fowler?
Yeah.
All right. So I think that'll help you with how much you're encroaching because you can keep that one over there, correct?
Yeah.
Without having to up your number?
Correct, yeah.
So, I mean, that might be a way to sort of stick with this design, but yet appease, you know, conservation, so that, you know, you're not overdoing.
Right.
Overdoing it any more than you have to. I mean, that's what we've said all along, is show us you could do it. Now we'll decide what's the best option, knowing you could do it without asking us for waivers first. That was sort of what I said all along, was that, you know, I'd rather that way. Yes, Mr. Fowler?
Just to, one thing that bothered me about what was coming down the pipe was the chief called, the chief called me on Friday, I believe, which was very nice, wanted to tell me what was going on with not even fire station. I hadn't read that out, but about this site. And he told me about Lieutenant Zawicki's having a letter, and he read to me basically what was in it. And I thought about it after we hung up, and I said, I, I really don't, I couldn't want that. The letter was, we're going to go, we're going to have the deputy chief go in there during construction period and check it out, make sure the trucks can get in there and out, and not hit the curbs, et cetera, not hit the the end of the islands, the end of the radiuses on the, on the driveways. Or something will have to go. That's, you know, you're closing the door after the horse left already to me. We better solve it now. You solve it on paper, you show it with the cap, you know, the gap, and as long as it works, it should work in real life. But to do it after the fact, all of a sudden, you can't move the buildings back because the foundation's already going to be in. You can't put the, you can move the road a little bit, I guess, because they couldn't get it. But you get curbs, and I was thrilled when you said granite slope curb because I've been asking for three days, why can't we put granite slope curb there? So I'm happy with the way this is going. I would not be happy with waiting till it was partially completed, constructed, and then, okay, now, oh, gee, we have to move the road over. Oh, yeah, these driveways are going to be eighteen feet deep instead of twenty.
Right.
Seventeen feet deep because of twenty. So we can't do that. Can't do that for the tenants, the people who live there, and for anybody that goes here. So I like the way we're beginning. I like the way we're going. I like the way we're going.
So if I look at this correctly, if you remove the first building on building five, you eliminate that problem of the turn radius, correct?
I would certainly want to look at that to confirm, but it it would certainly go, yeah, I think.
Well, that's the, that's the driveway that they seems to be most likely to bump into is that first one. Correct? That's where your red line runs right through the, with no extra enrollment.
Here.
Yes.
Correct, yeah.
So as I'm looking at the turn, that's where the red line is basically right up against where their driveway should end, but it's ending at eighteen or what do we have, eighteen-five, whatever number you've got there. But if that, how, if that building is no longer there and you've moved it over where it's out of the way, to the left side, to building four?
Four, yeah.
That should solve the problem there. The recess that you were talking about for the garages, if that picks you up the additional space for building four to take care of where their turn radius was going to have an issue there, that should give you all the space you need for real-world twenty-foot vehicles, correct?
That would be, yeah, I mean, I I think if we're moving this unit, I'm going to look at the turn to see if it can come down and, you know, just slide the whole turn down and away from those units in general, too, you know, kind of relook at the whole thing.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it looks like your problems are buildings four and five. That's where twenty feet won't fit. So if you, but you only have the the spaces set for normal-sized vehicles.
Right.
As they've pointed out, real world is you might have a suburban in there, and that's a problem. You know what I mean? You're telling, now you need the twenty feet. If you can get the twenty feet between removing this building and what you're talking about with the recessing over here, that should give you the 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 turn radius in the real world that they're looking for. And then we can stick with this design or this layout. Design's slightly changing, but that fixes that problem and reduces your encroachment because you've got one less building that's going in there.
Right.
Correct?
Correct, yeah. I mean, the only other thing I'd ask is there's an opportunity to even push them further back. If we're taking some of the impact out of the fifty-foot, I now have an opportunity to pick that, some of that up again. Could it slide further towards the southern property line, gain a couple feet that way on the setback relief, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I mean, I think the preference would be if you didn't have to do it, but I mean, if it's the only way it fits, then tell us that. But I don't want to just, I don't want to give you a blanket yes.
Sure, yeah.
And then, you know, it's, yeah, exactly. It was a nice effort. But I think, you know, we we were pretty settled on this, but obviously, we have one outstanding piece that needs to be addressed. I think this might address it without having to go all the way to the old plan.
Sure.
Which means you're not going to have to start over with every number, you know, some numbers, I mean, you move in a building, obviously, but, you know, and it keeps the things we asked for, like these extra parking spaces on this side. You know, that we wanted, because that gives some parking for those buildings, whereas in in your T-design, we lose that. Those buildings four and five, their visitor parking is a long way away. And that, we didn't, we didn't like that. And those were all some of those things, why we didn't want the the other version. And I think those still stand now. So I just assume we try to stick with this if you can make it work. If you can't, then you go forward with the others, you know? But at that point, at least we've exhausted the, trying to make this one stay the course as opposed to starting over yet again.
Sure.
So, all right. Then any other comments before I open it up? All right, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this matter? Going once, twice? All right, back to the board. I believe you know the pleasure of the board, so I.
Take a motion to continue, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, let me just find a time, yeah. All right, so if we're going for the ninth, it would be seven thirty-five. Motion to continue this to seven thirty-five on our March ninth meeting. Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, I'm sorry, all those opposed, none, and we'll continue this. That's a busy night on the ninth, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right, that moves us to a gender item F, one thirty-five Pleasant Street Elementary School, continued from our two-ten meeting.
So I wonder if they'll make the length longer, though. They're moving this over and then making these parking lengths longer.
Am I sorry?
But for all of them.
I don't think they will go, will they?
I don't know. That was one of the big reasons of the parking length.
Yeah, unless, if they do, if they recess, if they recess, yeah, if this is moving, but this one will be in the way. And if they recess the the parking, so they can pick up the two feet, they pick it up everywhere, they want it close on the side. So they do this, they're already, they already have, so they do that and pick up, right? But also, you don't need so much.
Yeah, maybe that'll work out.
Right. I mean, they got to run the numbers, but at least it keeps us on the right path still.
Yeah.
All right, if you guys would just state your names for the record, the floor will be yours.
I'm Jolene Betancourt with CBRE Hiri. We are representing on behalf of the applicant, Richard Montori, and the Elementary School Building Committee.
Bill Beatrice, Flensburg Architects.
Faisal Hussein with Niche Engineering, traffic.
All right, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. We are here this evening to provide a project update to answer any questions. At a recent town department meeting, the construction manager shared their site logistics and phasing sequence as illustrated on the handout provided. The construction manager will walk through this, and the design team will also provide an update.
Yeah. And if I could just piggyback on that, we are still in the review process. The town engineer is continuing his review right now. At our last meeting, there was a lot of focus on the traffic study that was submitted. The town has since that last meeting done an independent peer review that was completed by Vaness Associates. We had received their comments. Our our engineer, Niche Engineering, has responded to those comments. And so what I thought we'd do quickly here, I know it's kind of, it's been late, so we'll keep it brief, give an update. I'll ask Faisal to give an update on the comments and where we stand with that, and then turn it over to Christian Ridden from Consigli to kind of walk us through the list, the phasing plans that were presented at the recent town meeting, so. And we can go from there. That's okay.
Actually, you need to take that mic because the other one doesn't work.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, member of the board. Again, since last time, we did correspond with the peer reviewer, Vaness and Associates, and I have Jeff in here as well. And some of the, all the comments that we received initially, we can address them with responses. And and then it went back to the peer reviewer, and the peer reviewer kind of wanted us to take a look, to do some sensitive, sensitivity analysis to some of the areas. The corridor of Pleasant Street is is very, is very, very, very congested and and based on the crash history, it has a lot of occurrence of. based on the crash history, it has a lot of occurrence of crashes on that corridor. So we initially, when we did the report, only three years of data were required to do the safety analyses and crash data. And after we received the latest comments, we thought it will be appropriate to follow the new standards, which is now it's five years of crash history. And the, the two areas basically of concern are the kind of segments of the roadway of Pleasant Street, the, between Whipple Road and the high school, and then between the high school and the main street, Route thirty-eight. So we, we took those, we redone all the numbers, did the analysis, and found out that the crash rates, as we compare it to the state average and the District Four average, it was much higher than that. In those situation, something has to, you know, to be addressed. And the, the one thing about, you know, these locations being off-site from the school is not really within the preview of the project. So the town definitely, in many cases, ha, will have plans to address safety and operational issue along this corridor. The other location is the intersection of Whipple Road and Pleasant Street. I, I know, you know, that, that intersection is, is kind of very open, irregular movements, as confusing as the location we were talking about before. So again, that intersection crash rate tend to be higher than the state average and the District Four average. And something, what we did in our recommendation, because that intersection based on the, and the volumes, based on the accident history, does, is meet the warrant for the installation of traffic light. So what we kind of implied in our response, saying that that intersection should be signalized, or the town should consider signaling that intersection, signaling it as, as a process, and kind of a process that takes place, which start with what we call road, road safety audit. And again, the peer reviewer did allude to that part of his comments, suggested that a road safety audit should be considered for the intersection and also for the entire corridor of Pleasant Street. And.
Just, just to orientate everybody again. Yeah. You're referring to signaling at the end of Pleasant and Whipple.
Right.
I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Yeah.
Because we talked about a few different sections of the road, but.
Right.
Just to get everybody in the right place.
Okay. The signalization actually for this intersection, what we did is we took those crash diagrams for the last five years, and we put them on the plan, on the intersection layout itself. So visually, you can take a look, and you can see the type of accidents, the nature of them. Like a lot of accidents, if they are rear-end, that's indication of a high speed.
If you have side swipe.
That's indication of a frustration, somebody trying to just swipe by, and, and you get all these side swipes.
Somebody getting off the road, for example.
So it seems a lot, you know, people, when they turn in this area, they tend to turn at the higher speeds, so they get off the road.
I'll give you one guess as to why. What's just up the road?
The confusion.
All the new drivers.
Right. New drivers, confusion in the, you know.
You don't have.
They're delineated properly sometime. People tend to, you know, and not, not know where they're going, and, and new drivers as well, I mean, definitely, that's a good. So from, from that, and again, just to give us a sense, I mean, you, you can see a couple crashes, like, as, as they're leaving the intersection, how they're trying to, you know, it's, it's the couple rear-end in here, and, but the majority of the crashes are within this area. You know, having Marshall Street off, kind of complicated marriage as well, those are the movements, having this is between the two islands, and then having two large islands in there, a space that's really, is not practical basically from traffic controls. So.
So having a traffic light in there.
It's going to require a process, again, due to the road safety audit, modify the geometry, and, you know, and following basically a process of design to come up with the best solution for this location. The, the next thing is the, just to go back to the, to the other. Just want to go back to the driveway at the school. Again, peer reviewer suggested that we do a little sensitivity analysis about the turning movements coming off the site. When we, when we did the counts there, we, we, we generated the, the trip distribution, how many, how much percent turn left, how many percent turn right, and that's for the existing school. And then by adding the, the two other schools, the Trahan and then the North Street Elementary, definitely that changed the dynamics of the, of the turning movements. And then, in our judgment, basically, we have estimated that will be fifty percent turning left, fifty percent turning right out of the school. And when we had fifty percent, fifty percent, as you can see from, from this plan, which we have shown the last time, that the queuing goes about two hundred feet, which is, it does not reach the area pickup drop-off. However, if we, if we move it into, when that's kind of the, the analysis that we've done, is if we move it into sixty-five percent turning left, and then thirty-five turning right, in that situation, and we do the analysis again, that will tell us that the, the queuing could extend up to the drop-off and pickup area. And that's kind of the, you know, we become a concern that we have tried to figure out how we can alleviate that and, and fix it. However, what goes for us is the, the, the kind of overlapping of the time between the school starting, and, and that situation during any peak hour, like the highest hour, the volume is going to stay on the lower side. So that, i, if we do the analysis for that, that queuing should not extend up to the, to that pickup drop-off area. And, and there are, there were other comments, I mean, I think the other ones, we have, we did have a conference call today with Jeff, and I do appreciate, you know, his timely response to us. I think it was, it was great, and we had a great discussion today, went all over all the items. And I, you know, from the way I understood it now, we should be in good place to, like we are on the same page, and that, none of the items, again, these, because they are so significant, they are outside the scope of this project, it should hold, I mean, the progress of this project.
I think, just to circle back, back, you know, as a, as a recap, and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, the crash diagrams that you were, you were asked to provide that we did for those two intersections, I just kind of want to make it clear that was outside the scope of the traffic study. It was something we did, you know, kind of init, we were, we did because we were asked to. And that the impact of the new school isn't going, going to affect that crash data.
Actually, what we're trying to say is that this crash data is an existing crash data without the, the, the future condition of the schools. So, so it's not the, the contribution of the schools that caused these crashes, just to.
Right, it's based upon the geometry and the site conditions at those, those two locations. And just in terms of the queuing, looking at a different queuing split between the fifty-fifty, again, if we do sixty-five, thirty-five, left or right, with the staggered stop, start times that we have, we're, we're, we're fine in the amount of queue space we have.
I think, I think that's.
I think that's a kind of shit for a traffic recap. Was there any questions or?
So what, just have our consultant come up and just.
Sure.
Any comments that you have?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Durk. I'm a partner with Vaness and Associates, and we're the town's traffic consultant on this project. So I think just, I'll start with the project site and kind of the circulation and layout. It's, it's our opinion in looking at the layout of the site and the onsite circulation that it, it functions very well. It's ideally what we want to see in a school design, which is very long driveways, one-way traffic flow. The ideal situation that we want to have is pull all of the traffic into the site and sort it out in a safe manner. This site accomplishes that. What I do want to mention as well is that we do have a series of comments relative to onsite signing. Because of this one-way traffic flow and the number of parking lots and things that you've got there, it's very important that we've got a very good signing plan here so that people know, especially if you're, you know, not familiar with the site, that you can't go in the wrong direction. So for recommendations as to the appropriate signs and where they should be located, if they're not on the plan, they should be added to the plan. They're really important features to making sure that the site will function in a safe manner. So I'll, I'll start there. Now, looking at the access into the site, and one of the reasons why we had some comments on the distribution pattern is because, as you heard, it's very sensitive to the number of vehicles that are turning left. And as we were talking about these other off-site intersections, although, although they were saying they're not related to the site, they are related to the site, because as we were talking about the high school driveway and the Whipple Road intersection with Pleasant Street, the nature of the way that the existing Ryan School functions today, as well as you heard mention of those other schools that are being consolidated here, if you look at those traffic patterns, a significant portion of the traffic is using Alvetia, and it's not coming in by way of Whipple Road. So what that says is the entering and exiting traffic has more of a distribution that wants to be towards Route thirty-eight and working towards the Alvetia intersection. And so what that does, as you heard, is it increases the left-turn demand coming out of the site, which increases the delays because that's the more difficult movement to make and results in the increased queuing along the driveway. So I think the analysis we've asked them to undertake with more left-turning vehicles, what it's saying is basically that it is significantly important that this staggered offset between the start times, i, it's critically important that that happens. If that doesn't happen, what you see is that dynamic of it starts to spill back into the site. So that gets to, again, the sensitivity of the number of left-turning vehicles, so that's very, very critical. So they've done that analysis and, and kind of proven that out. Now, getting to the off-site locations, as you'd mentioned, you've heard mention of the crash data. So it was very important to us that we understood, we knew that the Whipple Road intersection has a very high crash rate. It exceeds the state average by more than a factor or two at that location. And then Pleasant Street itself, it's three to four times the state average in terms of the number of crashes. And those state averages are relationships to the number of crashes that are occurring based on the volume of traffic on the roadway. So there's some issues out there relative to the safety of those roadways and the geometries of the intersections. Now, they may not be directly related to the project site, and we recognize that. However, just from the standpoint of proper planning from the town's perspective, what we've suggested is that, as a part of municipal services agreement with the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, what the town may want to consider is asking, as a part of the services they provide to the town, is to ask them to conduct these road safety audits. So it would be a road safety audit of Pleasant Street along its entire distance from Main Street all the way to Whipple Road, and then the Whipple Road intersection. The road safety audit will basically come up with recommendation for improvements. And so as the town, again, is looking at future road improvements and how to spend monies relating to road improvements, and also looking at grant monies, that, that road safety audit will inform kind of the ability to get those grant monies, as well as what the proper improvements would be at those locations. Putting a signal down at Whipple Road, I don't think is something that's an appropriate solution down there. There's really no signals on that end of town, so I think there's some other measures that, that can be brought to bear on that. So that's kind of a high-level overview of what we've kind of arrived at on the traffic study. We did receive their responses late this afternoon, so we haven't had a chance to go through it, but based on the conversations that we've had today, you know, those are issues that can all be addressed in their response, so be happy to answer any questions you have now or later on.
All right, yeah, before we move on, are there any traffic-related questions that we want?
Sure, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Do we need a police detail at the school on a regular basis? Given the number of students coming in, the number of cars coming in, I know they're staggered, but is that something we should be looking at as a, as a solution to problems as far as stopping traffic coming on either side, to allow the, not having the queuing backing up exiting the building at that time? It's only an hour or so, or two hours a day, whatever, but.
I think it's something that you should certainly consider. I mean, this is a, the roadway itself is unique in that you have the high school and the Ryan School and the New Elementary School. So there's a lot of activity, even when these, you know, pickup and drop-offs have happened, you still have visitors, other things that are going on. I, I do think that that's something that should be considered. I mean, and if, if, if it ends up that, you know, it's out there and you need it initially, and then the, the police chief decides that it's, it's not needed, the traffic could actually flow, then that's fine, you could eliminate it. I think initially, you probably want to have that because you are going to have a surge in traffic leaving the site, and the only way it's going to get out of there is with a detail officer.
One more question I have, and I'll let you finish up. We have sporting events that are going to be used in the facility.
Yes.
All right. There hasn't been too much discussion about sporting events and the complications involved in traffic.
Correct.
Fifteen-hundred-seat capacity stands, very well-attended football games and so forth and so on, so. I mean, that's something we have to look at, whether it be yourself and them as well, as far as addressing the sporting event questions, as far as parking in and out and all that, so.
Right, no, absolutely.
PTO, police officer on a regular basis for sporting events, so.
The very last comment that you have, if you, in our review letter that you'll see, is that, that's one of the things that we laid out, is that a parking and traffic management plan is something that needs to be developed relating to sporting events at this site. And that's something that, you know, should be, you know, whether it's put together prior to your approval, but it's something that needs to be done. And so that's one of the recommendations we have, is that that document be produced so that you can understand what are the plans for comedy in those large events.
Sure, great, thank you very much.
So just, just to piggyback off that, like, I, I don't know what the town has come up with, but I, I suspect, as of right now, on, on the Ryan site, the only thing it's used for is football, and it's only used for practice during the week, and, you know, since they didn't have lights, the only games would be Saturday, early day, whatever. I don't know on the new site, how many different sports they may plan on using and what times. That's something that's going to have to be factored into that, because if they decide that they're going to, you know, play some of the soccer there, and the soccer games start not long after the high school lets out, how that factors into the, you know, those other schools letting out, I don't know, I have no idea about that. I just bring it up because I don't know what the plan is for the field, like, what it'll be limited to or what it will be expanded to. Like, who would be using it, I don't know. I mean, most of those other teams use the high school fields. I don't know if that's a want, and that that's where they want to be, or if it's just by necessity. I have no idea. Obviously, that's turf. So for soccer, field hockey, all those things, that's where you want to be because flat surface. This is going to be turf as well. I don't know how that distribution may change. Before you run those numbers, you're going to have to ask if they have any plan for how this is going to be used going forward, so they could factor that in. Because, you know, a game on Saturday afternoon, it, it doesn't mean much to all of this. A game on Wednesday afternoon does.
Yeah, that, that should be a part of the traffic management plan for, so the traffic management plans that I've seen or developed for sporting facilities related to the school spells all that out. It says if, you know, for each of those types of events, so that you see all of that, because if you're, you know, conditioning your approval, the events that are listed in that traffic management plan are going to be a part of what your approval would be. If they decide that they're going to modify that, either intensify the use or change those times, then they come back to you basically to get that modified. But you would want to see all of that spelled out in that management plan, so that you, you've got the document, and you understand, here's how it's going to operate under these certain conditions.
Okay, so you're, you're describing worst case, the town may come back and say, well, here's why we won't be involved in worst case, because we don't plan to use it for soccer. Whatever, but you're going to have to talk to them, so.
Yeah, and if I can add to the, to the parking management plans, as, as you look at the site, basically, we have parking all over, everywhere. We have a space, basically, it's really a park now, plus that perimeter road that goes all the way around will allow a vehicle to park on one side. This is about twenty, two, twenty-four feet wide. So, so you'll have. So, so you'll have a travel lane because it's one-way, plus you'll have parking all the way around, so.
Right, but we've discussed this before. That's not going to be in a thing where you're saying in advance that that's okay. It would be an as-needed basis, as allowed, but not factored in as being an absolute. So only the marked spaces are the ones that are accountable for what we're talking about. Anything overflow beyond that is going to be an as-allowed, as-needed basis, as determined by police. If whoever, if they have any issue with it, then that's not going to work. So don't run the numbers that way. Just make sure you stick to the, yeah, okay.
I mean, the chief, the, the chief will need, it's twenty feet unless the chief says otherwise. So you can't have twenty-four feet in on-street parking and still give the chief twenty-four feet to get around these corners. So the, again, that's why you want to see the traffic management plan, have both chiefs actually be able to comment on that, so that they can say, you know, this is the acceptable condition that we have, parking one side, but I need eighteen feet or I need twenty feet to get by here with a vehicle.
All right, anything else on?
One thing, one input. I'm a firm believer in a police officer directing the traffic or directing the loading over a teacher in a Tewksbury High School jacket. You know, people have more of a tendency to look and obey a police officer than they would a teacher or some, or a, whatever. If you don't, if the uniform is present, they obey the law. If the uniform isn't present, they absolutely do anything they want to do. And I don't know how you can stop the part where they load and unload and do all those things. A teacher is going to be doing that, but the exiting and so forth, the exiting and coming in. They, I believe in having a police officer or somebody there. Because it, it, it'll be hell. People will be unloading their kids out on Pleasant Street before they go through the loop. I swear to God.
No, I just, I just want to add to that, Mr. Chairman. Definitely, it's very critical, at least in the opening stage, to really have a police officer out there controlling traffic, and then it will be reassessed as time goes on, you know, with staggered opening and then attendance. So, as, you know, as Jeff mentioned, I think it would be, it would be prudent to have that upfront. And I agree with you because crossing guard cannot issue a citation to any vehicle who violates the, the rules of traffic. So only police officers, and that's why they always prefer to have police officers than crossing guard doing their.
I know, I had my truck break down on Shoshine Street one night. Police officer behind me with his car and lights on, and the people still didn't give a shit. They drove right over you. They ran right over you, even with the police officer there. I can't imagine what it would be like, you know, with just a, a teacher in a Tewksbury High School jacket. Okay? Because I don't think kids, teachers wear top coats anymore. But that's my opinion.
All right, well, that takes care of that. Move on to the next.
Oh, that's it for traffic, then?
I need the six-second thing.
So as, as Jolene mentioned, last week, we had a meeting with the various town department heads, and Consigly walked everybody through the phasing of the site as it stands now. And at that meeting, it was thought, Anna was present, actually, at that meeting. And she, she suggested we come back and kind of give you guys the same show. So I'll turn it over to Consigly.
Christian Ridden, project executive for Consigly.
I'm Bob Kuller. I'm going to be the superintendent on the project. Just, we had some small, uh, small changes in our logistics plan. Once we get on site, you know, hopefully between March and April, what the first thing we're going to be doing is taking some, the front of the central, center school, there's a, there's a grassed area now, we're going to be making that into temporary parking. Because right now, there's a lot of parking that goes on over here for employees. And for us to take our, our area after, it's going to be just, it's going to be advantageous for people to park here. Also, this, we'll call it the grassed area in between the Ryan and the center school is going to be the new recess area. Because I guess right now, recess area is taken back here, but we're going to be taking all that once we mobilize and get on site. So that's going to be the beginning. Spring twenty, this one. This one, here. So during our April vacation, during the springtime April vacation, what we're going to be, end up doing is, we're going to be expanding the entranceway. We're not going to be taking any of the existing bus entrance away. What we're doing is some landscape area on the right side of the roadway. We're going to take that, pave it, put Jersey barriers up to, you know, de-mark in between our entrance and the bus, and keep the bus loops as is. So we'll have Jersey barriers there. Our gate will be further back in here so that any deliveries will, you know, won't, won't be stuck on Pleasant Street. We have blackout times for any deliveries. I don't know the exact times, but there's an hour in the morning, hour in the afternoon where there won't be any deliveries allowed whatsoever. Just, you know, in terms of safety for everybody, because I, I guess, from here and everybody, there's a lot of traffic out there. The bus.
The reason for having that, that gate set in is if, if someone were mistakenly not to come, sorry. We're not going to come in at the right time, even though it's written in their contracts that they can't. There's a safety measure in there, so if there were an eighteen-wheeler that did show up, it'd be completely off of the street.
So, you know, our intention is any deliveries, there's not, you know, I'll have labors out there. Nobody will be parked, you know, they won't pull over on Pleasant Street off the road or anything like that. So if that's whatever backed up, they'll be told to move, go park somewhere for an hour or so until the, you know, blackout time is over. So that's basically what's going to happen during April vacation. Come June, July, we'll be doing the foundations. Steel will be going up towards the fall. And, you know, going towards the following. So between the fall and the spring, fall of twenty-twenty-one, I'm sorry. Fall of twenty-twenty-one, what is going to happen is the entire football field complex will be done along with the concession stand. It's basically, we're going to be turning over that whole campus. You'll have your loop road that's going to go around for people to be able to park for, for the football activities, or sports activities, whatever's going to happen over there. We still have our entrance, so that this, you know, bus loop stays the same, our entrance stays the same. So it's basically, we're not changing anything for the school, for the transportation for that. Come, at the end of the project, what happens during spring of twenty-twenty-two is that we take down the center school. In the summertime, we're going to be doing all the site work out in front of the Ryan School and on the side of the Ryan School here. Basically finish up in all the landscaping around the, around the new school, taking all our fence down, demobilizing. We're turning it over for the fall of twenty-twenty-two.
So, Mr. Riden.
I've seen a lot of these, I think a couple points that you came up with that Christian talked was my idea for recess. That didn't work out, giving the kids a location. That was a concern. Having the ability for kids to have a place to go, which that worked out well. Still giving the contractor the ability to continue on at his, his work in the backyard. Yes. I have any other kind of questions or concerns, is, you know, as I talked about early on, that we just make sure, look at some of those side streets, Summer Street, and look at those temporarily not having any of your deliveries coming down those streets. Those will tend to be cut through. Okay, we're talking about, no, Summer Street, it's a cut-through Dewey Street or Summer Street.
I mean, there's not, there's not going to be any deliveries coming, other than the front gate.
No, I understand, but the next two streets over, the side streets, they cut through all the way to thirty-eight. So you will potentially get, when traffic backs up on thirty-eight, if they have a GPS, they're going to take you through that neighborhood. So if you can, you know.
We'll write that in the contract, make that part of the contract that everyone will abide by.
Absolutely, because that's, that's, you know, thickly settled residential area. We can eliminate that.
Absolutely.
Well, I'd rather have, you know, control.
Absolutely, absolutely. No, but I think the rendition, they're great. I think it, it lets people visualize the progress and what's going to happen.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, nice work.
Mr. Delaney.
I'm all set.
Mr. Fattalia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Having looked at some of the Conservation Commission meetings that was, was presented on YouTube, I've seen that the swale on the back is gone. Is that accurate? Right? So I think I had seen some of that. And now, one other question I had is, the practice field, is that being reduced in size?
Yes, and those are some comments that came through for ConsCom. It, it was, it, the edge of the field did get kind of pushed down to pull it away from the riverfront area. Actually, Aaron, maybe you want to kind of handle this? This is Aaron Gallagher.
Uh, yep. So both of the statements you made are correct. The swale is, has been removed. The water that was previously going to the swale actually is now being redirected to the vernal pool area, and that was a recommendation from the peer reviewer. So we worked with them on that. And then also, yes, the field, the practice field in the back, the practice field gets slightly smaller, but what we did is we ended up tightening up the grading around it so that a lot of that area that was getting cleared in the back there for the practice field is actually not going to be cleared anymore. So it would remain a lot more of it will be remaining natural wooded area as opposed to what the.
So what can the field be used for, for activities, still?
Right now, it, it's, it's always been planned as an open grass playfield. The, the building committee did ask us, you know, what, you know, could fit on that? Could we fit a softball field on, in that area? And we can, and we still can, even, even tightening that up.
So softball, any turf activities, field hockey, whatever, or something like that, for, for the schools that are on site, right? Okay, great. All set. Thank you very much. Nice presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Far.
Believe it or not, I think I'm all set because you gentlemen explained it very well. You know, these will take with us, and we'll have.
We need these for you, too.
No, 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 no. Thank you very much.
So, what's it? The, the practice field, I don't know if I, I probably maybe missed it, but what's the practice field made out of?
It's, it's nat, natural grass.
Natural, okay. Did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I'm just going to grab that copy for the file for our records, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's nice to kind of have a, a visual of the, where, you know, where to expect it, you know, barring any problems, but definitely, definitely useful. I think also for residents and, you know, everyone else in town to know, you know, where things are going and what's going up when. I don't have anything else for this for now, so I'll open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns, please come up.
Greg Man, Six Monroe Circle. Since you're bringing up the Conservation Commission, I wasn't going to do it, but since some people have started already. Do you know how deep the, the vernal pool is going to get now that you're directing drainage into it?
The vernal pool was designed, the water going to the vernal pool was designed not, the ponding depths are, are extremely similar to what is there now. So that was our goal, was to keep it at or below, slightly below. Because what you really don't want to do is send more water there, but you also don't want to dry it out either. So we tried to match ponding depths of the existing runoff. And, and that, that pool is actually mostly fed by groundwater. So the fact that we're infiltrating a lot of water on site in the area where the vernal pool is, actually helps the vernal pool maintain that it's, it's normal depths.
I thank you, because I was afraid that that pool is, now, it's only probably about two to three feet deep most of the time. And you're going to have children playing around there. And when they have the football games, there's always a pack of kids that are off on their own, doing whatever they want to do. And I'm just afraid that if that pool, all of a sudden, is now ten feet deep, twelve feet deep.
Yeah, there's no lifeguards necessary.
Nobody, yeah, somebody, somebody's liable to decide to hop that fence because, you know, their football went in there. There was, you, you people probably don't remember, because I was a young kid at the time, but there's already been a tragedy on that field. They used to have a baseball diamond there, and they used to have dugouts. And one of the neighborhood children drowned in one of those dugouts. So, you know, it's in the back of my mind that I, I really want a nice, strong fence there to, to keep the kids out of there. Because it's, it's a, it's a potential for a tragedy, and we don't need anything like that to happen.
The vernal pool is fenced in now, and it will remain fenced in the new iteration, you know, so.
And, and I want to thank the, the consultant here. Everything that he said, I agree with. For nineteen years, I've been driving down Pleasant Street to go over to Gilricka. And believe it or not, you can tell when there's an accident on Route Three, Four-Ninety-Five, or Ninety-three, because everybody's got their GPS out, and they're all, all of a sudden, you're coming along and it'll be like five cars turning right. And it's like, nobody ever turns right there. Then you get further up, and there's twenty-five cars all at a stop sign. And then finally, later on in the news, you hear, oh, big accident on Route Three. And I dread when I go, when I, when I screw up and I go too early in the morning and I'm down by the high school, because you're sitting in traffic and you see these young kids, white-knuckled, and they're trying to turn. And like, one turns and stops, the next one turns and stops, and they're fighting back and forth. Or then there's somebody who, I've gone through, I don't know how many times, where I've seen really close accidents. So to say, have somebody actually say that, yes, that's a problem, and yes, that Whipple Road is a problem, that I, I've, I've believed in ever since this project went in. I'm, I'm really grateful to hear that somebody is voicing an opinion, and that maybe something will be get done about it. And I really appreciate that. I'm going to say it, has the, has the, has the floodplain been taken care of yet?
I, I do that question.
I thought so.
You got to take the mic, though.
Yes.
It can take up to sixty days from the last time, which would put it somewhere around the middle of March.
But we, but we will keep you, we'll keep you posted.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate your patience. And thank you very much.
No problem. Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns? Only once? Twice? All right, I'll bring it back to the board. Any further comments from the board at this time?
All set.
All righty. So, next meeting?
Yes, next meeting.
All right. All right, so we'll schedule this for seven forty on March ninth. Do I have a motion? A motion made or a second? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. All right, thank you.
Bill, more like nine forty for you guys.
Bring a snack.
Good job, guys. Good job.
It's all part of the process. Thank you.
All right.
I hope you found a decent restaurant for dinner.
With that, move on to old business. Any old business? Any old business? No old business? New business? No new business? Correspondence?
Well, this would go under old business, I would say, but it's fine. For the petrol oil station on Main Street, on Pike and Main, I heard back from the property manager, and he's going to be installing the signs that I requested in the letter from a couple weeks ago.
Very good.
So once that's completed, I will inspect it and then provide an update to the board.
Very good.
Yep.
All right, town planners' report?
No, I didn't have any.
All right, if nobody has anything else, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion made and seconded? No hesitation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you and good evening.